I'd like to call the order of the meeting of Tuesday, December 19, 2017, the Board of Trustees, Long Beach City College. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Virginia Baxter?
Here.
Jeff Kellogg?
Here.
Vivian Malauulu?
Here.
Doug Otto?
He is in route.
And Sunny Zia?
Here.
At this time, public comment on closed session items?
There are none.
Madam Secretary, do we have anyone?
There are none.
Here's the not. Then we'll move on to the items. The first item will be that the LBCFA, LBCCFA negotiation item pursuant to government code, and the district chief negotiator. That's the first item. The second item, personnel pursuant to government code, section 54957, public employee employment performance evaluation, discipline dismissal, release, one or all the above. And then, those are the two items, Madam Secretary? Yes, it is. So if there's no comments at this time, we'll adjourn to closed session. This meeting is now adjourned. I'd like to welcome everyone. Closed session, there is nothing to report out from our closed session. So we're going to reconvene our open session and call to order the meeting of December 19, 2017, Board of Trustees, Long Beach City College. If everyone could please stand, and I'm going to ask our new position classified senate, who now is sitting at the dais. If you could lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please. If everyone could please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, you please call the roll.
Virginia Baxter?
Here.
Jeff Kellogg?
Here.
Vivian Malauulu?
Here.
Doug Otto?
Here.
Sunny Zia?
Here.
And student trustee Chavez.
President.
All right, thank you. At this time, I will officially report out on closed session items. There's nothing to report out. So we'll move on to item 2.5, approval of minutes of the November 14, 2017 regular Board of Trustees meeting. Could I entertain a motion?
Still moved.
Motion by trustee Zia, second by trustee Baxter. Question, comments on this item? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on item 2.5.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Doug Otto?
Aye.
Sunny Zia?
Aye.
And student trustee Chavez.
Aye.
Minutes of the November 14, 2017 meeting is approved. Item 2.6, introduction of special announcements. Superintendent President?
Yes, sir. We want to recognize three distinguished employees tonight. Diane Amalot, who is retiring after 15 years of service as a reading professor. We want to congratulate her and thank her for her service. James Nagle, accounting professor, is retiring after 14 years of service as well. And I believe we have Diane Cannon in the audience here tonight. We want to congratulate Diane on 10 years of service in her retirement as a business systems analyst, too. Diane, are you here tonight? Let's see. No? Okay, well, I want to congratulate these two, these three individuals, and thank them so much for their service. Thank you.
That concludes introduction of special announcements. And there was no other, at this time, by members of the board? None. Item 2.7, this is the reordering of the agenda. Is there any members that want to reorder any of the items? Hearing none. We'll move on from 2.7. 2.8, the ASB president report.
President Kellogg? I'll be going ahead and reporting.
Chair recognizes student trustee.
I'll be going ahead and reporting on behalf of the ASB president because he is unable to attend today's meeting due to a work conflict. So I'm just going to quote what he just told me. "It is a breath of fresh air to have completed another semester at Long Beach City College. We had our PCC and LAC Club Senate award ceremonies two weeks ago where individual students and clubs won awards for their dedication to excellence for both inside and outside of the classroom, serving as role models for our youth. Last week, we hosted our semestral cram night where our students were provided tutors, snacks, Scantrons, and various testing materials to get through finals week. Overall, this semester has certainly been one for growing and learning for our cabinet, and we look forward to serving our campus and community for the semester to come. Thank you all, and have a great meeting. Go Vikings."
Well done. That concludes 2.8. We're now at 2.9, public comments on agenda items. Madam Secretary, I have no individuals wishing to comment on public comments on the agenda items, correct? Thank you. Is there a World Series game on tonight? Is that why?
Seems like it.
We didn't move that fast then. We're to presentations, 3.1, purchasing analysis, bond-specific spending analysis. Superintendent President, would you like to begin with this?
Yes, sir. I'd like to introduce Executive Vice President Anne Marie Gable, who is going to introduce her team to provide us with a very informative and enlightening presentation on purchasing analytics, bond-specific spending analysis, and how we are spending our bond funds locally. Mrs. Gable?
Thank you, President Romali. Tonight, we have with us Alan Maloney, who is our deputy director of purchasing and contracts, and Mr. Joseph Carroll, who works with the Solis Group. And as President Romali indicated, they're going to be giving us a brief presentation on the purchasing analytics, as well as some of our spending analysis with our CSWPA.
I'll try to keep it to 10 minutes. I was warned. So thank you, Executive Vice President Gable. Good evening, Board, President Kellogg, trustees, President Romali, and guests. Tonight, Joe and I are going to be talking a little bit about the analytics related to purchasing, related to our bonds. Tonight, we're going to talk about the outreach activities to the local business community, the impacts of the Measure E and LB bonds to the local community, and the impact from our CSWPA projects. So first, we'd like to start with, what are outreach projects? One of the most important things we have is a partnership with the Long Beach Unified School District. The reason that's important is we both have active bonds, we're both trying to build similar facilities, we're using a lot of the same contractors, a lot of the same professional services. So it's important to actually be able to share information back and forth, and we do that, first of all, by cross-referencing our vendor list. And then, this past year, we've started to step it up a little bit, and we've started outreach fairs. We had one in July, it was very successful. We had over 78 attendees in an un-air-conditioned auditorium in the middle of July in 101-degree heat, and they all stayed. So we're able to, over the small, they basically were small and large contractors, specialty contractors, and design and engineering firms. It was so successful, we're going to continue to do that, and our next outreach event is scheduled for March of this year, of 2018. One of the other things to look at, when you look at our outreach, is how we get vendors to register. It's important for a vendor to register with the district. The district, on our website, has a button, so any vendor who's interested, whether it's for the bond or non-bond, do in a register. It actually is a great database that we then use, and we've got almost 100 vendors. Every year, we go and we try and refresh that, we do outreach to continue to grow it. Throughout the year, we're constantly adding to it. One way we add to it is when a bid comes in, we're looking at the list of subcontractors on it and cross-referencing, are they on our list? If not, we outreach to them to keep adding them to the list. The other is, we've also reached out to our partners at Orange County, LA County Building Trades, to get their membership to register. Let's get the local businesses to actually register with this through the trades is really one of the pushes we've started this fall as well. We also reach out to our partners at the other community colleges in Southern California and share our vendor list and cross-reference that, as well as the information back and forth. Some of the other outreaches are with the Solis Group. The Solis Group is actually under contract, and one of the things that they do as part of their contract for us is outreach for specific projects. The other way we look at it is we say, okay, how do we find the vendors? The Contractor State License Board has a wonderful database. We're able to actually extract that and data mine it and be able to invite vendors from that to get more involved and to register and to be involved with specific projects. When we have a project that we know that is going to be in a, basically a high-spend project in this community that has a lot of other projects against it, we send out, save the dates, and we do marketing before it even goes out to bid, so people know to start looking for it. We know the vendors can basically bid on a lot of jobs, and we want them to bid on our jobs. So the other is, we send out the notifications to the registered contractors from our website. We advertise our opportunities in the press telegram. Our public work documents are all at Dynamic Imaging, which is our plan room of record for access. And then, we also post them to six electronic plan rooms for vendors to be able to get those documents in the bids and the specs. And then, of course, all our opportunities are posted to the district website. So let's talk and look a little bit about what that impact is to date. Over the last five years, you'll be able to see on line one, local vendors. Definition of local vendors is, we go to our PeopleSoft Accounts Payable system, we look at the zip codes that make up the district, and we find the vendors who have a remit-to address that is within that, those zip codes, and we query that. Those are the numbers that you're seeing there, and the numbers reflect the spend that came from the bonds during those periods. Of course, the second line that you see is the total for those at that same period, and the percentages are there below it as well. You can start to see from 1415 to 1516, 1617, we've started to have some positive growth, and we want to be able to continue that positive growth.
Hey, Alan, can I just interrupt you for a second? Can you state the definition of local vendors again? I'm sorry, I didn't catch that quite well.
Yes, trustee Zia. We go to PeopleSoft, and we go to our Accounts Payable system, and we go to the vendors who are registered there with a remit-to address, which is in the zip codes of the district. Those are the, that's how we define the metrics for that. So what are we going to do to keep growing this? It's important to be able to keep and grow and get contractors interested in being able to do work and to be our partners. We'll continue to work with the Orange County LA Trades, not just to be registered, but to also help increase the skilled laborers in our community, and then to further get them from laborers to business owners. And then, if we can link them through our Small Business and our SBDC program and Goldman Sachs, and pull those together, we can actually get an increased workforce that is local that will help grow it as well. The other is, we hope to get more funding for our pre-apprentice training program that was very successful, and then to promote the use of those local graduates back to the vendors in our zip codes as well. What we want to do is, like I mentioned before, is we want to be known as a local vendor, partner of choice for these contractors and businesses. The economy is very strong, very strong. We're seeing a lot of competition, and we want the vendors to say, hey, I will wait and submit on this instead of on something else. Just as a little metrics, two days ago, we launched the RFQ for design bill projects, and in 48 hours, we had 42 companies contact us asking for those documents. So we're doing something right, and that is very helpful. So some of the other outreach we're looking at doing is with the Solis Group, minority of businesses as well, businesses, to be able to get more growth in that segment as well. Now, I'm going to step aside and turn this over to Joe to talk to you about the CSWPA and the metrics there.
Thank you very much. We talked some about outreach to contractors and vendors, but the CSWPA also contains provisions about usage of local workers for craft labor, employees on the projects. It defines several different definitions of what local workers mean. District residents, who reside within district zip codes, or who are veterans, no matter where they reside. Gateway cities, which is essentially the southeast quadrant of LA County along the 710 and 605 corridors. Local residents, who reside anywhere in Los Angeles County. So when a contractor wants to find a worker to work for them on one of our projects, they can go to the union hiring hall, and the unions have committed to first sending, prioritizing district residents, then gateway cities, then local residents. And only if no local residents are available at all, will they send the otherwise top person on their list. Our goal is that 40% of the positions be from local residents, with the sub-goal of 15 from district residents. We're also attracting apprenticeship utilization, because part of the policy reason for having local workers on these projects is to provide new opportunities for people who may not have already had experience with the trades. And when that happens, and contractors are willing to give them an opportunity, that happens through the apprenticeship programs that the unions have set up. We have two contracts that have been going so far that are under the CSWPA. The first is the Building P renovation, and on that project, we've exceeded our local target, with 75% local workers. District residents, we're 9.6% out of the 15% target, and we're continuing to work with that contractor to bring numbers up, to provide as many opportunities as possible. We've asked them to provide verification of the efforts that they've made, including requests to the unions for workers. As you may know, it's been a tight year for the labor market and the trades, and they've had a lot of requests that have gone unfilled. But we've also had, the construction pre-apprenticeship program here on campus had a job fair over the summer, at which the apprenticeship programs also attended, and workers who had graduated and looking for jobs. And we made sure that contractors were invited to those to, you know, speak directly to workers who may be willing to, able to work for them. The other CSWPA project active is the video surveillance project. That one is a little bit different, a smaller, more specialty contract that involves the installation of security cameras. So a lot of the work is specialized programming and kind of installation work that's a little bit less amenable to new people into the trades. And you can see, we are exceeding our local target, it's 47.5%, but the district residents have only been 2.5% on that. And similarly, we've been working with that prime contractor regularly and making sure that they are providing verification of the efforts that they're making to continue to look for opportunities for our local residents. These two projects have been good experience for us as we move forward to the first very large CSWPA project. That's the Building Day Theater project that will be awarded tonight. That one is larger than both of those put together by a good deal. And some of the things that we've learned that will help maximize our local hiring going forward, first, just contractor education. The contractors of many different tiers work on these projects, and they need to know in very simple terms that what our agreement is about. They understand PLA, they understand a labor agreement, they don't always understand that our CSWPA is similar, is a type of PLA. So we've created frequently asked questions about working with those agreements. And we also have mandatory pre-job meetings in which we, the contractors and unions get together, discuss the work that's going to be performed and the job assignments. We've gone beyond that to make sure that we're also discussing local hiring with both the unions and contractors, so that they understand their obligations. And in the future, we're going to go even beyond that and invite some of these community agencies to come themselves. Our pre-apprenticeship program, Winter has been a great partnership, partner, they're the women in non-traditional employment roles. And if we get them to come out and be able to make their case directly to the contractors, to be able to say, look at all the great people we've hired who are ready for you to bring on and give an opportunity into the trades, we found that that has an effect on helping it increase in the future. And finally, we'll perform a craft needs analysis, so that we know when certain trades are going to be utilized on the project, so that we can go to our partners in the trades and let them know where there are going to be a lot of carpenters or a lot of electricians needed in this particular month. If you've got people who are already on other projects, maybe shift them around, or maybe you can bring new people in so that they're ready to be dispatched when it's time. So with that, we appreciate you, you're listening to our presentation, and we're ready for any questions.
Members of the board, question this time. Chair recognizes Vice President Zia.
Thank you, President Kellogg. Thank you both for a great presentation. I must say that I'm very impressed with both the caliber of what we're doing here and also the statistics. So on that note, I just had a couple of questions on just some logistical points. What is the typical period that we advertise our bids?
So our typical period for advertisement for a public works bid that is formal would be two weeks, would be once.
I'm talking about on the website. How long do we?
On the website? It's from the moment we post the notice of bid, all the way up until the bid's awarded. So depending on how much period of time that is.
What's the average?
So it's minimum two weeks, up to a month, can be six weeks, depending on the project.
Okay. I would just encourage us to have a longer advertisement period. The other item, I just, on your local vendors that you have, I believe it was on page five, so do we have a goal that we're trying to aspire to, supporting local businesses? Or is the goal only on local hire as it relates to residents in the district?
So the district does not, is not required to have a goal. So we, and the other part of that is, help me, trustee Zia. The other part of that question is, is it just on trying to get local? We're trying to do both. This metrics is businesses, so this is the one we can track from the data we have. So this is tracking the actual businesses that reside.
Okay, so this includes the zip codes that are within the district?
Yes, yes.
Okay, great. And I know you guys did quite a bit of outreach effort, it seems. Was there a reason why we had a dip between 2016 and 2017 from nearly 5% to 4.2%?
Some of that has to do with the amount of construction we have going. It also has to do with the amount of bids that were out during that period, and the types of bids. So, you know, the tail end of a project to the front end of a project, you know, with the pay-ups and that type of thing, so a lot of factors go into it.
So it's not a direct correlation with outreach efforts? So that's just one distinction.
Yeah, it's a blip.
Okay. And have we considered reaching out to associated general contractors? Or perhaps you already do that, AGC? They have a plethora of membership in the Southern California region and California. They're, they may be great partners in getting the word out. They represent general contractors and also subs. So as Joe, just something to consider, they may be a great resource to get more responses. Also, have we considered, when we're putting these bids out, and this goes along with any type of solicitation that we do, just having a checkbox? Of course, in a bid situation, it's very black and white. Have they previously hired LBCC students? Or if selected, will they hire? Just as a consideration to incentivize local businesses to hire our own students? Has there been much thought, or perhaps it's something that we can consider looking into to inspire local businesses and businesses in general to hire our own?
We can take that back for discussion.
Okay, I'd certainly be interested in that. We're trying to get more internships going, and this would be a good way to get industry to work with us. I've heard a lot from industry saying, hey, call us to action. And then lastly, I believe it was page nine, and this could be an example, this is the video surveillance project data. Is this typical, that we get 17.5% on the self-performance part by the prime?
That varies a bit. That's a little bit on the low side, and.
Yeah. Do we not have threshold minimums on how much a prime can self-perform? I thought, I mean, typically, what I've seen in construction has been 25%, so that contractors don't broker the project.
Right.
And sub everything out, and are essentially the shield, or the front for the project. It's just, I like the fact that it's got a lot of specialty work, but it just is kind of curious to me that we have this low.
The vast majority of that 82.5 is one particular subcontractor, too. It's just been an unusual contract because of the scope of it. For contracts like the theater going forward with a large number of different scopes, you're going to see a much more traditional mix of contractors and a much, nobody's going to have any significant part of the work.
Perhaps in circumstances like this, we can consider flipping the dynamic where the specialty can be the prime, and, you know, whatever the general type of work is involved, they could do the sub-work.
We actually, we actually had a number of specialty contractors. We had over 40, from what I remember, 40 people, businesses represented at the job walk, and some of them were specialty, some of them, so it just depended on who responded with the RFP.
Yeah, just something to consider. I think it's a standard with 25% according to the Green Book. Just something to be mindful of. It kind of gave me pause when I saw those numbers. But great job. I'm very excited to see these numbers and keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other members, chair recognizes trustee Malauulu, followed by trustee Otto.
Thank you very much. That was a great presentation. I just have one quick question. First of all, I agree with what trustee Zia asked as far as including some of our current LBCC students and possibly even future students, reaching out to the high schools to see if there are students who have any interest in coming on campus and learning and getting involved. That might be a possibility for recruitment, and then lining them up with employers in the area. So that was a great comment on her part. But my question for you is, several years ago, I was a part of the Trades Advisory Council, which was under the leadership of Dr. Lynn Shaw. And I know that Lynn is technically no longer a part of our faculty, so we haven't met, but was any of this work, did that include some of the members of the Trades Advisory Council, or were they a part of it? I know it was, you know, great to see that Winter was a part of it and some of our other partners.
No, we actually haven't worked directly with the Trades Advisory Council. We, the CSWPA sets up a joint advisory committee of its own that's been taking the lead on that. But if there are, if we do have resources and people who've got connections with the trades, it'd be helpful. I'd love to hear and reach out to them and let them be part of this.
You know, I'm not really sure. Maybe Executive Vice President Gable or President Romali can, you know, I don't even know if we still have it. You know, the last time we met was a couple of years ago, and we did some work with the electrical curriculum. But since then, I don't recall getting an email or any meeting, so maybe that might be something you could look into. It was a great group of professionals from the various industries, and they came together here on campus. We used to meet in building 02, I believe.
Okay.
So it might be something to consider.
Thank you, I will.
Thank you.
President Kellogg?
Other questions?
No, this is in response to what Vivian said. Lynn Shaw is on the faculty at Long Beach City College. She is on loan to the chancellor's office, but she does, is on the faculty.
That's what I said, technically.
Chair recognizes trustee Otto.
Just one quick question. In this CSWPA metrics, I noticed that local residents are defined as those living anywhere in Los Angeles County. Why is it limited to Los Angeles County? I know that, for example, the building trades are, you know, are organized both with Los Angeles and Orange County. We are situated, literally, on the border. And is it just the way it got defined, or is there any flexibility in doing that? Is there any reason?
Yeah, I think it was just the way it got defined. We unfortunately weren't involved in the negotiation of it, but it's, it may have been something that the building trades just had as a standard suggestion.
Hmm.
And, you know, certainly, for these projects, I believe, projects under this CSWPA go another about five years out or so. But it's something that, if it's mutually desirable to both parties, you know, generally speaking, we could, you know, look into changing that.
There are zip codes in Los Alameda, Rossmore, Seal Beach, that are contiguous to, but in Orange County, and so it's just, anyway, you get the point.
Trustee.
Other questions? Members of the board? Trustee Zia?
Trustee Otto, I believe, if I recall, from the letter of the CSWPA, all right, I hope I got all the letters. I recall it was both LA and Orange County as far as local goes. But my recollection, I mean, we're talking about February of 2016, when we passed the PLA, so it's my understanding that it's both. It's not just LA, but that's what we voted on. But you guys correct me if I'm wrong.
Actually, it was April that it passed, and the documents, Joe was quoting the document as to how it's defined. So yes, the definitions here come directly from that document.
So you're saying that Orange County wasn't included in the document?
Not from, I don't have it in front of me, but from the best of my memory, no.
Yeah, maybe we can see that at a later time.
Can you confirm?
It's easy, okay.
Other members this time? The, thank you. This is just presentation only, so there's no vote required, but I do appreciate the information. As we were looking through all this and before, the strides we've made have been excellent. We also have here, which is, and I heard a little bit of that conversation with the fact that we have not only the effort here and what we're doing, but we also have with the project labor agreement, and that embedded in that is also to help people get into the trades. That's another path. And then to trustee Malauulu, also with our different, with our CTE programs, with all those advisory committees they have, which are required to have in all the different trades, and their connection is to the local employees, employers. trades, and their connection is to the local employees, employers, et cetera. So we really are trying to make every way possible to help not only our students but local residents get involved and where they're getting a good-paying job, earning a career, a trade. So a good indication, the one interesting thing, and this is not anything different than what, when I was involved with the Alameda Corridor Transportation Authority, that was that $2 billion project. And looking, and that's the only thing I can compare, and your company was involved with them as well. So to compare where we are progressing here versus that 19-mile corridor, it really is nice to see the progress we've made and the impact we've had. So it does, it's not easy, but I'm very encouraged by the progress we've made. And with all these other things, including the CTE program with their advisory and with the project labor agreement, we are making impacts. The one thing that hasn't happened in Long Beach, and it still, is that Long Beach has never been a strong place where corporations call home. They usually do it in Los Angeles, and that's just been, that's more of a historical issue. The Long Beach has never really been, and ironically, even with the Port of Long Beach, the major tenants there are not headquartered in Long Beach. So it's a frustration that's gone on for its time being, so it's just not something that just happened. So, but excellent report, and we keep moving forward. So board members, there's no other comments at this time. This is just presentation. So thank you very much. We'll move on to 3.2, which is another presentation. Thank you. 3.2 is the Guided Pathways Award Program. Superintendent President?
Yes, sir, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. That was an excellent presentation. I really appreciate that. Board members, I think you will also be very interested and impressed with the next presentation, led by Dean Michelle Grimes-Hillman and Director of Planning Jennifer Holmgren. They're going to talk to you more about the Guided Pathways Award Program. The Guided Pathways, as you know, is a critical element of our strategic plan that allows students to move through their academic progress in a very directed and helpful way that helps them complete. It's critical that we are in this program. We're one of 20 statewide in this program, and we, the team is going to tell you more about our progress and where we are in that important phase.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. We're very happy to be here and talk to you a little bit about guided pathways, answer any questions that you may have. You know, transforming our institution using a guided pathways model will help keep our students on task, will get them through their educational goals quicker, costing them less money. You know, the guided pathways model asks, asks us to no longer check to see if our students are college-ready per se, but rather, are we ready for our students? And we recognize across the state, and in fact, across the nation, students have accumulated extra units, they've reached the end of their financial aid status, they do not have a certificate or degree to enter the workforce earning a livable wage, nor do they have the requirements to transfer to a four-year institution despite our well-intentioned processes. The Guided Pathways Grant Program is very important to us. Long Beach City College is ahead of the curve in many ways. One most important way Dr. Romali already talked about is that our strategic plan aligns with guided pathways. It has, the model is embedded in our strategic plan, and we also have our own college president who has implemented guided pathways in Chicago to help us get, we will hit the ground running. The chancellor's office, the chancellor's office recognizes that we can improve student lives and has set aside $150 million in one-time money to help us augment and expand our work that we've already started with our Triple SP funds, our basic skills, and our strong workforce program.
So a little bit about the Long Beach allocation if we receive this grant. If we receive the grant, we would receive about $2.3 million that would be distributed over a five-year period, which you can see displayed on the graph, on the PowerPoint. And our, and this would be based on a 20% equal distribution across the California community colleges, as well as 35% on FTES, and then 45% on our Pella grants that we award.
So how do we become eligible for this award? In September, we attended a workshop put on by the chancellor's office Institutional Effectiveness Partnership Initiative. When we returned from the workshop, we began a self-assessment that will be submitted at the end of December. That assessment is in your packet of materials. After the assessment is submitted, we will begin to work on a five-year plan. The chancellor's office has asked us to break up that five-year plan into chunks, and we've been asked to submit the first in 18 months of our work plan by the end of March. We will receive the allocation in April, and then we can begin our work right away.
So a little bit about the self-assessment tool that you have in front of you. The self-assessment tool was developed by the chancellor's office to include 14 key elements that they identified as necessary to implement guided pathways. And so we were supposed to rate ourselves on how far along we are on each of these elements on a scale of one pre-adoption to four full adoption or full scale. And so we rated ourselves based on a lot of collaboration among identified campus constituent groups. We had 38 individuals and team members identified by the institute participants to participate in the initial input. And then we sent the document college-wide to receive more input on each of those 14 key elements. We also brought this to the Academic Senate and the College Planning Committee to get their input and feedback as well. And so from there, I just wanted to give you a few examples of what those key elements are. You have all of them on your slides. I'm not going to go through every single one, but to give you an idea, we had nine elements that the college rated as early adoption, that were in the early phases of adopting these areas, and then five elements that were identified as scale and progress. And so for, you can see for key element number four, which is inclusive decision-making structures, an example of this would be that our superintendent president, Dr. Reagan Romali, created a guided pathways work group that is consisting of managers, full-time faculty, part-time faculty, counseling faculty, and classified staff that were identified to lead the guided pathways implementation on our college campus. Another example is improved basic skills. We rated ourselves as scaling in progress for this one. As you may know or you have heard in the past, we have a lot of great innovations going on in our math and English courses. We have developed accelerated and compressed math and English basic skills sections that get our students through basic skills faster when they're placed in lower levels than transfer and allow them to succeed, succeed in greater numbers in these courses. We also have our reading courses going through the curriculum process right now. They're developing accelerated courses for reading, just like math and English has to get our students through reading courses faster, too. And then our final example, key element 13, assessing and documenting student learning. We rated ourselves as early adoption. We've really taken strides, that Student Learning Outcomes coordinators have taken strides with the Assessment of Student Learning Outcome Subcommittee to assist faculty in placing their student learning outcome assessments on our Learning Management System Canvas for disaggregation of student learning outcome results. And so this is huge because we're going to be able to partner with Student Learning, the Assessment of Student Learning Outcome Subcommittee, to disaggregate student learning outcome data for faculty and institutional effectiveness, and this will allow them to take a deeper look into differences among ethnicities and genders and other metrics to determine where students, to determine ways to improve student learning. So with that, does anyone have any questions?
Questions, members of the board at this time on this presentation?
There's a lot of money out there, $150 million they put in the last budget. But what I remember is that we were a little bit ahead of the game, the fact that we knew who the chancellor was, and he was adamant on doing this when he was here. But it still is, besides that, and the fact we were ahead of it all, the numbers you laid out here is really important that we stay ahead of everybody else in the system because obviously it's helping our students move through the system quicker and more efficiently. So it's, it's a critical part. I know it sometimes can be lost and just, it's a lot of verbiage, but it's very important for our students. And the fact they're focusing on it, knowing the problem is district, is system-wide, and the fact that Long Beach City College is already ahead of that is great. So if anything, it was a great presentation, and we just keep working on it because it's going to benefit our students. So, good job.
Chair recognizes trustee Otto.
Yeah, great report. I think the key to our, our position with regard to this is that it's so integrated with our strategic plan. And traveling up and down the state, talking to other trustees, to other superintendent presidents, chancellors, and others in Sacramento, there's a lot of questions out there about, is this the fed du jour, or is this one really going to stick? Everybody's now read the book, the Tom Bailey book, and is this just going to fade out? And we are, I can tell that we are doing absolutely everything possible to keep that from happening, and, and we need it to happen because the truth is that, you know, 10 years ago, there were 2.6 million community college students, and now there are 2.1, and it's not because people don't want to go, come to community colleges, it's because the state's not funding it. And so every seat is valuable. The days of, of 100-unit students are over, and they need plans and to complete it. And I think we're on a very solid pathway to get there. There seems to be a lot of enthusiasm on this campus, and yet the most important thing, in my opinion, for what it's worth, is that it is so integrated with our strategic plan that it's like hand in glove. And so I'm cautiously optimistic that we can use this as a way to achieve what we need to achieve.
Other questions, comments at this time? Superintendent President?
Yes, I just want to thank you both, and I want to also thank you for your hard work as well as acknowledge the work of Kim Anderson, a faculty member who's on release time for this project. And I also want to acknowledge the full help of the faculty and the staff on this, as well as the administrators who have worked, as you say, trustee Otto, really tirelessly. We are on the front cutting edge of this, and we're going to continue to do so because the Long Beach City College team understands the importance and the critical aspect of this for our students' lives. Thank you very much. Wonderful job.
Thank you. That concludes item 3.2. Jennifer, don't go too far. Item 3.3, we're now on to the enrollment management. This again is a presentation. Superintendent President?
Yes, sir, thank you. I am very proud to announce Dean Paul Creason, as well as faculty member Susan Cully, and again, our wonderful director of planning, Jennifer Holmgren, are going to present our final enrollment management plan for you tonight. I think you are going to be very, very excited. The entire college has been working so hard on this. The Enrollment Management Committee has been working for a great deal of time, headed by Paul Creason and Moises Gutierrez, our department chair of math. And all of our faculty and staff have formed work groups, and we have looked at virtually every aspect of the organization, from how we recruit and market students, from how we register them, to how we schedule them, including pathways, and then how we complete them. Enrollment management touches every single aspect of the college, and you're going to see that tonight. We also are putting money and resources behind that. You're going to see a hire tonight to put together that marketing team, to strengthen John Pope's area, the marketing team, so that we can provide the resources to make that happen. And I want to congratulate you and the entire college on your hard work, and please show us your fabulous presentation.
Thank you very much, President Romali. Board President Kellogg, members of the board, and Superintendent President Romali. We are really excited tonight to show the strategic enrollment management plan. And I just wanted to mention that my co-chair is Moises Gutierrez, and Moises is on a plane to Samoa to spend the holidays with his wife and her family, so he wasn't able to be with us tonight. But we have an excellent pinch hitter in Susan Cully, who is a member of our committee and has participated throughout the process. So as Dr. Romali said, it's really exciting that we've been able to get a lot of this information from the campus. And what we discovered as a committee is, over time, we're doing a lot of these things, and we've got things happening in various pockets. It's really exciting. But one of the things that happened in our committee is one of our faculty members from chemistry just had a light bulb come on, and she was looking at this schematic drawing of our plan and how it works out, and she says, "I just figured it out. I see myself in this plan. I know what my role is." And that was really kind of the impetus for our theme, which is to see yourself in the plan, because this is everybody's business here at Long Beach City College, and it's everyone's responsibility. So we've got some exciting things to show you tonight, and I know you have a copy of the plan. I wanted to just show you how it's organized. You have your strategic enrollment management plan, you have your year-one priorities, and then you also have what's happening across campus with the various slot groups that Jennifer will be going over. But I did want to move to the first slide, where the Enrollment Management Oversight Committee has been gathering information from the campus, all across campus, on what's happening out there related to enrollment management. I, as a dean, am on the ground floor with some of the data and some of the scheduling and those kinds of things, but what other things are happening across campus and student services and other areas that impact? And there's a lot, as you can see from our plan. And those year-one priorities include a number of things that we're doing now and we want to do, but a lot of them are well underway. And we've accomplished a lot since Dr. Romali has come on board as well and made many of them priorities. So one of the things that we did is we added some key resources to our committee. We've added people that have expertise in the area. We have a faculty group and an administrator group, but we've added some key resources from institutional effectiveness and marketing in key areas that are critical. We had an IEPI partnership resource team, which is a group of consultants come and look at our plan, the way that it's being organized. They really liked what they saw. They gave us some nice tips that have been incorporated in here. For example, one of the things that they recognized is our need for campus-wide professional development about what is enrollment management from the very basics. And I think that as that rolls out, it's going to really help people see themselves in the plan. As you can see, there, we've, we've taken input from a number of people. We went to CPC, Moises presented to the Academic Senate, or Moises and I presented to the Academic Senate. I went and presented to the Classified Senate, and Moises also presented to our ASP group. So they were able to see it and give input and be connected to it. So that's worked out really great. So now I'm going to turn it over to Susan, and she's going to tell you a little bit about the purpose of the enrollment management plan.
So those of us that are here recognize this as a wonderful college, a destination college, but we have to go beyond the idea that if we build it, the students will come. So the point of the enrollment management is really look at it to create ways to recruit students, retain them when they get here by supporting them all the way through the process, by creating schedules that really meet the needs of our students, by providing access to the classes that they need at the times that they need them, and deliver it in the way that they want to take the classes. We need to do this in an efficient way by establishing FDE goals that can be tied to the budget for the different departments so that everybody knows what they need to do and how it's going to affect us.
So I'm going to take a little bit of time to talk about how the plan is organized. We organize this plan in the completion-by-design framework, and this is a nationally-known framework. It's also in direct alignment with guided pathways and our strategic plan. If you remember with the strategic plan, we have our strategic plan metrics intentionally designed in the completion-by-design framework, which really takes you through each part of the student's experience at a college, from connection to entry, progressing through the institution, and then to completion and on to either transfer or to the world of work. We also added an additional area. When looking at the enrollment management plan, we determined that some things fall outside of this, that are things that we do behind the scenes to support students, so we added an integrated support structure section to the plan. So just to give you some examples and highlights out of the plan, in connection, some of the things that we're looking at doing are moving registration dates. Our superintendent president, Dr. Reagan Romali, has created a senior leadership team work group comprised of faculty, management, and classified staff who are involved in the areas that would be working, that we would need to modify in order to move our registration dates. So we're looking at moving them into the semester for fall and spring so that students are registering before they leave our campus. are registering before they leave our campus, and they're not registering in the winter and summer for fall and spring, so we catch them before they leave. For entry, one of the strategies that we're doing is implementing Viking Express Days, which we started this past summer. We had over 1,000 students attend, and what this is, is a day where students can come to the campus, and they complete their orientation and matriculation processes in a matter of hours. And so instead of doing all of these at different points in time, they get them all out of the way in a one-stop shop. In progress, we're looking at really honing in on our student-centered scheduling, looking at students' student educational plans to inform the schedule, as well as prior enrollments. We're also looking at high-retention equity-minded strategies, so looking at ways to make our syllabi more welcoming through professional development, as one example. In completion, we would like to connect students with more postgraduate opportunities for employment, partnering with industries in our local region. And then in integrated support structures, one of the things that we got out of our visiting institutional effectiveness partnership initiative resource team was that we should definitely have a lot more professional development on efficiency strategies, on helping faculty, on helping management, and classified staff really understand enrollment targets, efficiency, FTES, and everything surrounding enrollment management. We're also looking at more data use workshops to really dive into the data to help inform our enrollment management. And now we're going to talk about the year-one priorities.
It was critical that the committee really focused on our strategic plan, and as you can see, our overall strategic plan has the same completion-by-design icon. You'll see them throughout our plan, and we did find that things clustered very nicely into those areas. So under the first-year priority of connection, as you recall, that's initial interest through submission of the application. You have the year-one priorities as identified by the committee, but an example of that is the marketing that we're doing. I think this board recently approved something massive. The firm that's doing a lot of marketing, we use some of our strong workforce and adult basic education dollars to do that, and that's really been helping. And there's been other efforts on campus where, if you have a department or discipline, and you'd like to create a brochure to help to market your course, we've put some processes in place there. So that's an example of how we're working towards connection. In addition to some of the other examples you have there listed under year-one priorities.
So in the area of entry, one of the things that we'd like to do is create a welcome center, so that as soon as students step on campus, they get that warm feeling that they're wanted here. They're greeted, they're told about the campus, they're assisted in all the things they need to do, finding where their class is, finding where the counselors are, knowing where to park, where can they get a snack, all of that kind of thing, to make them feel like we really want them here. We also will be providing students with the guided pathways and roadmaps that were discussed earlier, and that is something that will help students, as soon as they come to campus, know what steps they need to take in order to reach their goal. And this is something that'll coordinate with what they do with their counselors and their ed plan, but it's something they could hold in their hand and take home and mark off. Also, the roadmaps that we're providing have non-academic goals as well as academic, so it encourages them to sign up for different roadmaps or stops along their roadmap, as far as being able to join clubs that are going to help them, apply for graduation, that type of thing. So once the students are on the way, we want to support and scale innovative approaches to assessment and delivery, so that we can make sure that we take a look at how students can be most successful while they're here, so they'll be encouraged to continue with their classes, providing accelerated reading programs, statway programs, which have proven very successful in the area of math and are being expanded, and also co-requisite classes in English, so that students can be working on their communication skills, their writing skills, at the same time they're taking up classes, because sometimes these areas slow students down and discourage them, so we don't want to do that. We want to help them get through those. So once we've done that, and we've got them here, we want to make sure that they stay. So we're going to expand communication with students by having student emails, by providing, continuing with the Starfish, to notify students at key junctions as they move through. That could be where they need some assistance, because maybe they're starting to slip, or that could mean, hey, you're getting close to your goal, you know, speed up. We want to offer them high-quality online classes, so students who do get employment while they're in school are encouraged to continue and still meet their goal, so that they can work and attend class. Also, providing that opportunity as the state of California moves towards more online offerings, we want to make sure that we have them here as well. And we want to support and scale innovative, equity-minded strategies that faculty come up with to share with other faculty, and make sure that we provide those across campus.
So completion is a huge part of what we do, and there's some exciting data that's out there now that we're able to utilize, and I'm going to give you an example of that. We've got incredible access to data, I'll say, as a dean here, to be able to look at some of these things. For example, I recently was using Student Education Plan data, in addition to waitlist data, to determine what types of courses we should be offering in the winter session, and we were able to act on that. In addition, I worked the phone bank last week, and we were able to have a spreadsheet in front of us that had a student with what their needs are as far as what's in their student ed plan, and I was able to say, did you know there's a Biology 41 lab class that's available this winter? And they got a call from the actual dean in the area, so it was kind of fun. But we're able to utilize that type of data. For example, the example for completion is, we're targeting students with 45-plus units and letting them know that, you know, you're this close, and we're working with Student Support Services to make an effort to give those students a nudge, which I think is really going to be beneficial. So we're nudging them, and we're providing the courses that they need using data, which is pretty exciting.
And lastly, for our integrated support structures, just one quick example is utilizing predictive analytics to inform and explain persistence at the college. The college has invested in Civitas, which is a software that can be utilized to predict when and why students might drop out. This is something that institutional effectiveness is currently working on. We're also, in the early stages of piloting, well, this semester we have piloted Starfish Early Alert with our faculty and our counselors, which allows faculty and counselors to communicate with each other through this program and with their students, to identify, you know, points of kudos, to give them kudos for successful things that the students have done, to identify areas where students might be struggling, and reach out to those students, as well as to inform counselors, or vice versa, inform faculty about a student interaction. And so this is really important in retaining students at our college and increasing student persistence and retention. So this year, in the past seven months, we've made a lot of progress. We've done a lot of really great things at the college, and one of those things is Dr. Romali has implemented senior leadership teams, 12 of them, at the campus, and like I mentioned earlier, they are with faculty, classified staff, and management, and each of these teams directly relates to the strategic plan and the enrollment management plan. So they're really going to move enrollment management forward. A few of these examples is our call center, and the senior leadership team for the call center was tasked with improving call center efficiency, and they've improved it and reduced drop calls by 50% in the past semester, and I think that's really remarkable. Another one is, I already mentioned identifying components to move up registration dates. And then we've also added two new teams recently, the Guided Pathways Team, as well as a Student Wellness Team, to address student wellness and improve ways of assisting students when they're having social or emotional issues. How can we support our students more to keep them here? We've also increased our marketing outreach and recruitment, and one thing that we've done is a reorganization at the college to move outreach and recruitment into the College of Advancement and Communications. So we've moved these together in order to help improve the processes and the areas between these two. We've enhanced data usage through Tableau data visualization software, and we piloted that with faculty to disaggregate enrollment data, to look at efficiency targets in a way that is easier to understand than spreadsheets. I mentioned the Starfish Early Alert pilot, and we're also implementing 25 Live, which is a room usage and scheduling software, which will improve our scheduling at the campus. And finally, we have been developing enrollment targets. The deans have worked really hard to develop enrollment targets for winter, spring, and
So what are our next steps after we go through the first year? One of the things that we want to do is to begin taking a look at your two priorities, but we're going to do that after establishing-
Would you mind speaking to the microphone, please?
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Sorry.
Is that better?
Just a little bit more, yeah. I think so.
Okay. Thank you. Is to develop metrics to measure the progress on the plan. We need to know, how are we doing? We think we have a good plan in place, but we want to make sure that we're evaluating it all along, and that will help in establishing the two-year goals by looking at what's working, what can work better, what new things can we do. We also want to keep working on the professional development aspect, so that everyone has the opportunity to participate in the development and become stronger at providing the types of services that are going to help our students come, succeed, and complete. We're going to continue sharing our innovative best practices and continue working on the one-year priorities. So basically, we have everything in place, and it's just a question of scaling it out and having everyone work on it together. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, and thank you. This is a much-awaited document. It is critical to this college in so many ways that many may not realize, but at this time, I'll open up questions, members of the board at this time. Chair recognizes trustee Zia, followed by trustee Baxter, followed by trustee Otto.
Yes, thank you.
Vice President Zia?
Thank you, President Kellogg. First off, thank you for doing such a great job. Thank you, Superintendent President Dr. Romali, for your leadership. I just want to make sure I heard correctly. You said the call centers, the pickup, the average pickup is, you've raised it by 50%, five-zero, is that correct? I hear that right? That's tremendous, and I just want to applaud our Superintendent President and you guys for doing that, because the number-one complaint I would always receive, both in my district and from the internal community here at the college, was that, look, nobody's getting through. I think trustee Otto had brought it up numerous times, so I applaud you on that note. I also wanted to ask, I know you have addressed it in your other reports with the disadvantaged communities, which happen to be, a lot of them in my district and trustee Malauulu's district. What are some of the mechanisms in which we can attract more enrollment, and perhaps you've already considered this, when it comes to career technical education and the vocational programs? Is there a mechanism, not just for matriculation, but for certificate and getting them ready with careers in the industry, perhaps in construction?
Do you want to address that, and I'll address it after you do as well? Oh, you want me to take it? Okay. There are a number of initiatives. We have a gentleman who is being approved for employment tonight, who is going to head our, he's the new Executive Director of Public Relations and Marketing. And even though he hasn't started yet, we've already been starting today on laying out a plan on how we're going to reach that audience. We are also talking with the port in how we can build stackable credentials that lead to excellent jobs with the port. We also have a new dean of CTE that you're going to be approving tonight, where we are looking to expand those opportunities with that Something Massive Marketing contract to try to get more people into the trades. We are also in the very early stages of a discussion with LBUSD to locate a middle college at the PCC campus to employ, or to give an opportunity to underserved populations to come into the trades at PCC and have a great opportunity to get a great-paying job. So there are a number of cross-referencing efforts underway. I think you'd be very excited. They're all at the beginning stages, but the hopes are high and the plans are crossing well to get students into those tracks, yeah.
And that will help our enrollment as well. And do we have a timeline when we would like to do it by? I noticed you guys had a first-year priority, second-year priority. Is there a set timeline that we'd like to accomplish this by, or?
Yes, this is a three-year plan. However, we are moving very quickly. As you can see, we talked about what we wanted to do is update you in the third tab on the progress we've made thus far. So not only has the entire college done the plan and completed the plan, but we are also stepping off and made real excellent progress along the plan, so we intend to move as quickly as humanly possible, because we know the impact, not only on the enrollment, but on the student lives if they get those opportunities.
Great. Thank you so much. This is great. Thank you.
Chair recognizes trustee Baxter, followed by trustee Otto. Trustee Baxter?
Thank you. And again, I agree. Wonderful presentation, and thank you very much. I have a couple of things. First thing, where are you going to locate the welcome center? And after you tell me, I'll tell you why I'm asking that. Or has that decision not been made? Or has it been made?
So the welcome center-
You're not on.
You're not on, yeah.
Sorry. The welcome center here at the LAC campus will be located in the A Building, where currently outreach and scholarship is. We're still looking at the PCC campus to determine the best location there.
Okay. The reason I ask is, I was stopped by a young lady today asking for counseling. And where the counseling department is, there are so few places to park and come into the college, you know, and her parents were dropping her off. And at first, I was trying to tell them, well, now go around the block, and then there's meters in this lot, and then go do this and that. And finally, the girl was smarter than me. She says, "If I get out of the car, will you show me?" And I go, "Oh, yeah, come on. It's only about 50 feet from here." So, you know, to me, we need some kind of sign, welcome sign, besides going in. The trouble with the front door is there's very, when I come to the front door, I park out in front, because I know about the 20-minute zone, but I bet the average person doesn't think, gee, I can park here. You know, they're looking for a parking lot, and that's the observation. Okay, number two, how does the Long Beach College Promise, Promise Pathways, fit in with this? Is it running simultaneously? And what I mean by that is, because I tell people this is what's going on, that if you sign this contract, your child will graduate in two years if you follow the college's directions on what they're to take. Is this in accordance with that?
Yes, it flows. This Promise Pathways is a seamless part of the enrollment management plan. We're very excited with Chancellor Oakley's California Promise. We have, we are planning on taking advantage of the leverage that we have, and that we were there first under his leadership, and it is fully funded through the foundation. So we are going to use that prominently in our marketing strategies.
Wonderful. Okay, number three, did I hear you say you're going to give student emails like pcreason@lbcc.edu?
Yes.
This is something that is 10 years behind, and I won't say what other school, but it's close by. I'm really glad to hear that, because to me, it made perfect sense, and I don't know why we didn't do it. And my next thing will be giving retirees LBCC emails. That'll be a number thing. And then I'd like to know who's on the Student Wellness Team, because I hope that part of that team has a component for the homeless students.
Yes.
So who's the head of the Student Homeless Team?
So I'm the head of the Student Wellness Team. The committee that's pulled together, we actually made sure we had representation from all areas, faculty, staff, students, across the board, but the current team has over 35 members. Very strong representation, very flexible scheduling to make sure we have adequate input from everyone.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you. It was great.
Chair recognizes trustee Otto, followed by trustee Malauulu. Trustee Otto?
Sure. Excellent presentation. I think we're off to a very, very good start. I think we're off to a very, very good start. Although, as I read through this, and then as I listened to your presentation, I kept thinking, where's the fiscal plan? How much is this going to cost? And how are we going to pay for it? And it's, and I don't mean that as a criticism, you've got to, you know, work these things through, but it is a very exciting plan with a lot of components, and I heard words, software words, among other words, that I hadn't heard before, and we've got systems up that I didn't know about. I was thinking, how much did those cost? And, you know, so it's on my mind, as money is, especially tonight, and so, do you have any sense of that? I'll give you one example. Professional development. Who's going to head that up? How much is it going to cost to do that? There's some training that has to be involved, and just take that as a microcosm of all the things that you're talking about. How does it work?
Do you want me to take that? Okay. I'll take this, and EVP Gabel, please add if I have forgotten anything. That's a great question, trustee Otto. It is partially funded. It is not fully funded yet, because we have a lot, we still have to flush out. However, there are a number of things that are funded, particularly like the early registration, the Starfish are in the BPR money, so you'll see that in the BPR money. We also have funding through the Something Massive contract. However, I'm going to take that suggestion-
Tell them what Something Massive is, because I bet-
Oh, yes.
If you ask everybody to raise their hands who knew what Something Massive was, there would be very few hands up.
Oh, sure.
Except for John.
Yeah, good suggestion. So we have funded a number of things to support the Enrollment Management Plan. I'll tell you what we funded so far, and then what we still have to flush out. We have funded positions, new positions. We are funding a new executive director of PR and marketing. We're funding a, who will be hired tonight. We are funding a director of Community Relations, which will be funded, and that person we anticipate hiring on the January Board Agenda. We have funded the addition of one outreach assistant or recruiter to join Megan Edmonds on the recruitment team, and of course, we have our president's ambassadors that volunteer, and they're going to be helping on the team as well. We have also funded $400,000 a couple of more meetings ago. It is to a company named Something Massive, and they will provide the marketing research, the marketing content creation, and the advertising, whether it be bus backs, radio, TV, for marketing our CTE programs, so that piece is funded. We also have funded the Starfish Early Alert, and we have funded the registration, the moving of the registration through our BPR monies. However, there are some things, we've also funded, most recently, some photography equipment and a great deal of marketing materials. We have a nice closet full of those that we've gotten. Thank you, John Pope, and your team for doing that. Now, will there be additional costs associated with this? Yes. And as we start to flesh more of that out and get our new leader on board, and we start to identify what some of those costs are going to be that we have not anticipated, we will be able to bring those to you as well, as soon as the new leader gets on board and gets that a bit more flushed out. Did I miss anything?
A couple things, just to add on to that, is as part of this with the student emails, one of the things that we wanted to get in place first was the Student Technology Help Desk. And so we have funded a new management position that is staffed by a new manager, Laura Rantala, who has hired students to run the Student Technology Help Desk. So we have the students helping the students, and we needed that in place before we provided the emails to the students, so that was kind of a stepping stone there. The other piece that we don't have the funding yet, but we will be getting a $200,000 grant from IEPi based upon the Partnership Resource Team that came out and looked at our Enrollment Management Plan. So those are just a couple of things I wanted to add.
Thank you.
Okay. Let me, let me drill down then on, I'll just pick an area that I've been thinking about here, and that is scheduling. How is the college optimizing class scheduling based on student demand and workforce needs?
So we wanted to bring up Michelle Grimes-Hillman, dean of Academic Affairs, to help answer.
So we have a couple of pieces of software that we use. We have had in place for a long time the Data Warehouse that was started with Don Burz when he was here at this campus, and so we use that to provide information to the deans and the vice presidents regarding enrollment trends, helping us make projections. The other thing more recently we have done is implement some Tableau software that allows us to take our data to a visual level, to make it easier to read and interpret, and that has been being used by the department heads as part of their program review. That also allows the data to, allows the faculty, the department heads, the deans to drill down and disaggregate the data and look at demographic data. So those are two pieces of software. The third thing we're doing, of course, as you saw, is implementing 25 Live. It's a product we've had, but now we're fully implementing it, and it will become our master calendar and allow us to use our rooms more efficiently.
Tell me a little bit more about 25 Live, because I know of it, but not all that it can do.
So one of the things, I'm going to now turn and look at Brent to have him come on up here, because he is actually in charge of the implementation piece of 25 Live. But one of the things that we will be able to do is track all the spaces on this campus. So a lot of the labs can now be fully utilized, because we'll know exactly how much is, how much class is taking place in the lab, and when a lab is not being used for a particular department, we can now maybe even place a lecture, depending on the lab facility. So that's one of the benefits that we're going to have with 25 Live. Do you want to add anything to that? No?
Well, if, I've got a couple other questions about scheduling, and I love Deb Brent up there, because I've got a lot of respect for his abilities in this area. Is it your understanding that the scheduling work that we're doing is educationally viable? You know, is this going to accomplish what it is that we want to accomplish? And if so, what are the criteria you are using, and how do you know whether it is or isn't?
Well, 25 Live doesn't really interact with, like, student ed plans, so it's a different type of application. I think looking at SCPs, you wouldn't use 25 Live to do that, so-
And I'm completely off of 25 Live. I'm asking a generic question about, about this area and how you know. I mean, I read through the plan, I love the plan, I just, I know the Integrated Services at the end, you're talking about how you're going to know that you're being successful, but, you know, it seems to me you've got to be, first of all, educationally viable, it's got to be cost-effective, all these things that we deal with on a regular basis. And how are we looking at that with regard to this plan? And maybe take scheduling as an example.
So I think, member Otto, one of the things that we use as deans is the Data Warehouse, and we use a variety of different reports. For example, waitlist data, I'm able to predict and look back three and four semesters, if I would like, and know that a Math 130 intermediate algebra class is going to be something that's going to be necessary for the students and in high demand. And one of the things that we have done is we have done what we call Ghost Sections. So they're there, they're ready-
Got you.
And they can be activated at the snap of a finger. And with the Viking Express days, to give you a real practical example, Sonia De La Torre and Elijah would call me up and say, we need another Math 130 class, and we would have one ready to go. I would call over to Academic Services and say, activate that class. When the student showed up at 9:00 AM the next day, there was a class. And an aside to that is I went to actually evaluate that class this year, because I did faculty evaluations, and we opened that class up Monday, Wednesday, and Friday night from 7:00 to 9:00 PM, and I went in there and it was full. It was a double section, full of students that really wanted to be there. It was quite something. So that's one of the ways that we're doing it. And then as far as the educationally viable, I think that we do a very good job of really connecting with our advisory committees and figuring out what they need in industry and making sure I can speak for the nursing area and allied health areas, that we make sure that they're getting what they need.
And are we inventorying and ramping up our advisory committees as part of what it is that we're doing? I know that's historically been an issue.
Yeah, you know, that's something that a lot of different areas are doing a little differently, and under the leadership of the new dean in the area, we might be able to kind of wrap our arms around that a little bit. But I know that in the nursing and allied health area, we've recently broken the allied health folks and the vocational nurse folks out of the registered nursing area, because there's different facilities that they go to and they have different needs. So we're really taking a look at how we can make those more effective.
Is your scheduling plan cost-conscious?
Absolutely.
And how do you know it is, and what kind of decisions can you make if it is?
So one of the key things is obviously under-enrolled classes, monitoring under-enrolled classes and canceling those as the data comes through. One of the things that we have is a best practices document for this for the next semester. This is a dynamic document. There's a couple of things that, you know, there's some guidelines with a best practices, and one of those things is to set some timelines on when you take a look at those classes and what kinds of decisions to both add or, you know, convert. What I do sometimes is I redirect students into other classes and try to get a class that's full and more efficient.
So besides being educationally viable and cost-conscious, is the program cost-effective, and how do you know it is if it is, or how do you measure that? And that means, is it bringing in revenue, is it-
Stabilization.
Yes, I can, I can answer that, unless you'd like to-
Well, and trustee Otto, we're also monitoring very closely the fill rates and other efficiency measures, and we're going to be doing more of that when we get the $200,000 from the IEPi, and we can provide comprehensive professional development for our department heads and others who are involved in scheduling. And also, Dean Creason didn't talk about the War Room, but I know that both in math and also in Jean Carbonara's area, they have what's called the War Room, where in the days leading up to the beginning of the semester, they're monitoring the enrollments on a daily basis. Every morning, they come in and look to make sure that our classes are as efficient as possible. So they're combining classes where the enrollment is low, they're looking at times that are in demand, where, you know, big waitlists, they're adding where they need to add, they're working with Student Services. So those two areas in particular are, have been doing a really good job, and I'm sure there's others also, but Moises presented the War Room and how they did that to the department heads this year, and that kind of training will continue, because it's all part of it. And we're, we know that, as I think you said earlier, every seat matters, and we know that, and we know that we need to provide access to students into the classes they really need, and we're focused on that.
I know that the $150 million, of which we get two, is one-time money, and so when I talk about a fiscal plan, what I mean is, so where's the money coming from, and is it going to run out, and are you going to get your professional development done? We got that done, and we only had to do that one time, but what are the ongoing costs? And is this sustainable, what we're doing? And that's why the fiscal plan is important to me, because once we get this big machine up and going, we've got to be able to keep doing it, and there will be ongoing costs. So I'm just, and I know you're working on it, and that's it. I've got lots of questions that I won't ask, but I'll talk to some of you offline and President Romali as well, but do you have enrollment targets for departments? And are they on board with those? Is this a new thing? Is this something that we have to sell? Or is this something that, and how do we, how do we measure it, and how are we going to, how are we going to find out how we're doing?
Vice President Scott?
The schools have targets right now, FTES targets, and the deans will divide those targets among the disciplines in their area. We do not currently have efficiency targets, and that will be part of the thing that we need to talk about. I mean, we are looking at fill rates, which is a measure of efficiency, but we need to look at other measures, the 525, weekly student contact per FTEF, to look at faculty load specifically. So we need to do that, and that would be part of the training. And in terms of sustainability with the training, if we develop something that's really good, in part with the money that we're given, then we can make sure that all new department heads who come in receive that same training, and we just modify it so that it is a sustainable thing going forward.
Professional development is just one of the costs that are affiliated with what it is that we're trying to do here. Very exciting, and I'm glad to hear that we're, we're holding departments, at least at this point, schools accountable by saying, here's your targets. We work out what their targets are with them, what's realistic, and what's, what it's important with keeping your eye on what it is that we need to do to grow, because as we all know, we are in stabilization, and if we don't grow, there's no purpose to an enrollment management class unless it makes you grow. And so I'm hoping that what happens is that, at least quarterly, we get a report as a board that says, we've heard all this, how's it going? And say, this is what we know. This is the return on this investment, and, and we like what we're going, or we're going to fine-tune this, and we're going to put some more effort here, and I hope we continue to get the money to do it, and that the state continues to fund it. Every morning, and I think we're three years beyond where we ought to be economically. I mean, I don't mean the college, I mean that, you know, we should have been in a downturn three years ago, and I don't know how long it's going to last. What I hear is the projections are all very good and all that, but at the same time, the only thing we do know is that it will go down, and that will put stress on, on all of this great work that you're doing. So thanks, and I'll ask offline.
Chair recognizes trustee Malalulu.
Thank you all for an excellent presentation, very thorough and informative, and I know you're probably a little weary of being there, so I'm going to try to make this quick. I do have a couple of questions, though, and I think that hopefully you'll be able to answer them pretty quickly. Do you have an expected percentage enrollment increase? Like a goal or an objective? Have you tried to establish what the increase might be in the first year, second year, third I mean, we can, we can guess and we can speculate, but is there a way that you can actually target a percentage goal?
Well, our target is going to be our FTES base. We need to reach base so that we don't have a problem beyond 18, 19. So we'll use that college-wide FTES target, divide it out among the schools, divide it out among the departments, so everybody knows what their part in this is. I don't know if that answers your question.
I know that, the reason why I'm asking is because in journalism, I know we needed to have, I believe one year it was 17 bodies in one class, and 19 bodies in another, and 24. There were different sections of classes where we needed a very specific target number. So we went out into the college and tried to recruit that number, or had students try to invite their friends. So if, you know, it might help if departments have a specific number.
Yeah, and in some cases, we really need to hang on to the capstone classes, the classes students need to complete, and those may go under, you know, 17. And we need to be sure that we're not canceling classes where we're displacing, you know, 17, 18, 19 students, when we have no other class for them to go into. So all those things are taken into consideration as we're looking, really, class by class by class about whether or not to cancel. Some classes will go a little bit higher, faculty will add more, because I understand that other classes will go low.
And we also should consider students who are graduating, too. We certainly can't leave them out if they're on track to graduate in May and we're cutting the last class that they need.
You're absolutely right. Our target is to get back and retain the 1,900 students that we are down, so that we move out of stabilization and get back to our base. As VP Scott mentioned, we're very surgical about the cutting of the class. It's not, it's not a straight line, you're under 25, and so your class gets cut. It's very surgical. If it is a capstone course, if it's something that's going to make you graduate, we're not going to stop a student from graduating by canceling that class.
Right.
It's very surgical.
You wanted to add something?
I just wanted to add something, too. You know, as part of the Enrollment Management Plan and the Year One Priorities, we're also going to develop, and this is kind of in relation to your question, metrics to measure the plan as well. And so we will have metrics working with institutional effectiveness to measure the plan. If you remember with the strategic plan, we brought it forward without all of the goals set for the metrics. It's the same thing in this case, we're going to be, we have enrollment targets, but in addition, we're also going to be, have an evaluation of the plan and the projects in the plan, to make sure that, you know, if it isn't moving things forward, that we focus our efforts on something else or adjust our efforts.
Okay. Two more quick questions.
Okay, two more quick questions. Did you guys have any student input on these plans and what was the feedback that you got from students?
We did, we were fortunate enough towards the end of this semester to get an excellent student who joined us and was able to give input to the plan. One of the things that he prioritized from a student perspective was that we take a look at student support services, in particular psych services, as one of the priorities for student success. But he gave a lot of really great input.
And to add to that, I was with Moises when he presented to A S B. And A S B was really excited about the plan, in particular, the welcome center for students because they said when they started at the campus, they felt kind of lost and they didn't necessarily know where to go. And the welcome center having that would be a key resource for students. So they were really supportive of that.
That's great. And I know trustee Baxter and I attended a conference where one of the exercises was what's the first thing a person sees when they first walk on your campus? And we did it from the perspective of different locations. And sometimes the first thing they saw was the back of a building. There was no signage, there was nothing that said, you know, bright arrow with the flashing light, start here. So that was something we talked about a long time ago. One more question and a comment. I love the war room idea. I know that we've talked about that before, but I just think that's such an awesome concept to just sit there and, you know, really evaluate yourself and evaluate your own ideas and programs and to determine what's working and what's not and what has to be done. I think that's a great tactic for improvement. So keep that up. And the last thing is we've talked so much about marketing. And I know John Pope is in the audience and John and I have talked about this at length. But my, the biggest beef that I have that I hear from students constantly, they don't know, they didn't know, they didn't hear about it. And we, you guys, and I know President Kellogg is going to mention this, in fact, he's the one that brought it up, but you know, the email system that we have is failing. It doesn't work. Students respond to texts, students respond to social media posts and follows and, you know, whatever that entails. But if there's a way that you can research or bring in some students to find out how they want to be notified, just this last semester, there were so many activities on campus. I mean, we had leftover hot dogs at both of the welcome events. But, you know, dozens of hot dogs left over. And there were students an hour later starving because they didn't know the event was happening. If we would just send out a text, I've been saying that for a year and a half, let them know, club signups on both campuses, come get a free lunch, once you get your clubs, have four clubs stamp your card, you're going to get a free lunch. We'd be, we'd run out of hot dogs. So we, please implement some kind of communication plan that is successful with, you know, our popular, our current population of students.
Did you want to say anything and I'll add after you?
Yeah.
Okay. We will definitely do so. Thank you trustee Malauulu. I think you'll also be excited by some of the initial social media plans that we have, particularly with Instagram. We were talking today about the presidential ambassadors going out and photographing student life on campus, researching the hot hashtags where we can attract more followers and also taking advantage of students in our photography class to go out and photograph the interesting campus life to attract folks to the campus and get that follower base up so, and then do the retweeting and the regramming so that it reaches a larger audience. And tagging influencers who are connected to the college so that we can get the word of events out faster, registration and the various events that go on on campus. It's very exciting.
I would just like to close my remarks. My friend's daughter is a student here. She was planning on attending El Camino College. There was a mix-up in her registration. We were able to get her here the day before, you know, D-Day. And she loves it. She's very happy. She has straight A's. But she made a comment which, you know, my friend told me that her daughter said, she said, you know, she, she just wants to really get involved, but there seems to be nothing going on on campus. And I'm going, no, there are hundreds of things going on on campus. But she's a commuter. She drives in, parks her car, goes to class, leaves. She, she might not walk where the Viking newspaper is. She might not walk where there's a bulletin board, but guess what? She has a phone. And she told her mom, like, it's a great school, I have straight A's, I love it, but it's not a lot going on.
So I just wanted to add, as one of our 2014 accreditation self-identified issues, we identified the development of a communication plan recognizing these issues. And so that's something that we are going to work on. We need to make sure that our communication is coordinated too, right? Because you don't want to have enrollment services, financial aid, admissions and records, everybody sending a text to a student on the same day. So also coordinating it so that students aren't getting overwhelmed with the communication and making sure that we're in sync across the college. So that is in the works to develop that plan.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Student trustee.
Hi there. Thank you so much, President Kellogg. Thank you so much for the presentation. I really appreciate it. I had two questions regarding, one of them, the call center. So I know specifically as a student myself, like, a lot of times, like, in the beginning of the semester, you just got to walk by the admissions and records and financial aid offices and there's lines literally all the way outside and we even have to put a tent. So seeing times like this, will the call center have more people at the desk? Will there be people answering more questions, I mean, answering the phone more often? Because before they even, students get in the line or, you know, before they even have an idea in many cases, they usually call the campus first and ask, what's the process to become a student? So therefore I'm asking, will a call center have, will be, will the call center have even more people answering the phone calls in the beginning of the semester, for example? Because that's when we do have the most students wondering and being lost.
Thank you. That's a great question. The answer to that is yes. I want to acknowledge the leadership, the excellent leadership of Robin Darkangelo, who's in our audience tonight. And she led those wonderful efforts on the call center and she should be commended for that. And she does have a plan in place where we scale up and down based upon demand, yes.
Thank you so much. As for the second question, it was about scheduling. I know Dean Creson mentioned the need for a Bio41 Lab course during the winter quarter, during the winter semester. Now, I ask this for example, because I myself, I'm an honors student and many times within the honors program, we have either classes get filled too quickly or there's just too many honors students who need a certain class. And what seems to be different from an honors class to a regular class that's not honors is that professors cannot seem to take in more students. So it seems like there's just a gap of 24 students and that's it, that's all they can take. I've spoken to Dr. Jeff Wheeler, who's the coordinator of the honors program, and he said that it's a log, it's a long process to just get one more student added to the course because certain requirements need to be met for it to be considered an honors course. So I just wanted to know what's the process like for that and would that change with this new scheduling? How would that work?
I think what he's referring to is changing the cap on those courses and honors courses are generally capped at 24 because they want it to be a small intimate learning environment. So from the honors community, that's the recommendation. So our curriculum goes through and it has that as a cap. So as far as what it takes to change that from an honors perspective, I think you'd have to, we'd have to ask him and his expertise unless Dr. Scott may know what that process is. But from a curriculum standpoint, we are adhering to what the standard is for honors courses across the state.
Yeah, typically the honors courses require a great deal of research and so there's a lot of faculty time that's involved with each student. And I know that that's one of the reasons they try to keep them low. Jeff Wheeler did though, speak to the department heads at the last meeting about increasing the number of honors courses, understanding that we have more and more students interested in the program. It helps, it helps for transfer and we know it's very popular and we'll be looking at increasing those.
Thank you so much.
Other questions at this time, members of the board? I just want to thank you for the extended group that ended up at the podium. But, but the importance of, and this did take time, we realize that what the enrollment management plan, as this board has been discussing it, it is critical. And so, and for me personally, I'm going to stay in my role as a trustee, as a trustee in the questions we ask because I was jotting down all the different terminologies and the comment about in the community college system, there's a process and procedure for everything we do. And just that one time when I was listening, I wrote down everything. So we deal guided pathways. I heard college promise. I heard enrollment management plan. I also heard retention rate, persistence rate, which means student success rate, which gets us over into the data warehouse, which also we talked about state reporting, which gets into Fusion, which also you start talking about the strategic plan, the educational master plan, the facility master plan, which gets you over to a number 525, which really doesn't hold true here because the 525 really does not reflect us because we have a reduced calendar, not a full 18-week calendar. Now, if everyone's confused, you don't feel bad.
You missed the master master plan.
That's, I'm sorry. So the point is, as a trustee, as I'm sitting here, we put great faith in the fact now we have a plan that everyone can look at. It's a robust plan and, and review. But it's going to be how we implement it. And for us as trustee Otter, about the, the cost conscious of it all. So for me personally, when Anne Marie Gable comes back to us and talks about the stabilization issue, that to me is my indicator whether this enrollment plan was successful or not. If we are out of stabilization, even if it's for short term, it means that we are reaching the efficiency factors that we need because at the end of the day, what all this comes to, all those things I just talked about, it's about the funding for this college and every college in this state. And that's why it's all so important, your outreach, how you get people, how you focus on them, it's very strategic, et cetera. I think you used the word surgically. So it's, and, and just so I know, many times people said, well, just put a billboard on a bus. That's, that's not really, you know, we see them and we do it, but we have to be much more specific on this plan and that's what it's really doing. So for me as a trustee, I'm going to sit here and within the next 12 months, reporting that's going to come to us, and we see a lot of them coming before us. We have all these reports that come to us per the state requirement, but we're going to get out of stabilization because we're going to have an effective enrollment management plan that gets more students here. And all those things I just mentioned are going to happen. And that's going to help this college financially. And that's really what the enrollment management plan is all about, is for people to simplify it and not talk in a language that most people don't really care to understand outside. They just want to know, is the college strong financially? And that's why this plan's, for whatever reason, this board got concerned and one of the red flags was when we went into stabilization because our whole funding mechanism is based on growth. And there's no growth generally going on in the state of California for community colleges. There's maybe a handful of community colleges that are actually experiencing growth and they're not in the LA basin. So, so I, it was a long presentation, but we also know how critical this was. And there's going to be a lot more questions as we move forward because this is going to help us achieve so many other things. So if there's no other questions, members of the board, thank you for the presentation. And there's no vote required, so we'll move on to the next one. So thank you all. We're now to the final presentation for us, which I'm assuming is not going to be as long, but it's important. And that is the Personnel Commission Annual Report. So again, superintendent president.
Thank you, sir.
Item 3.4.
I would like to welcome our personnel commissioners tonight, Dick Gaylord, Janine McManigle Ball and Uduak Jo Nautuk, as well as Kristen Olson, our executive director of Classified Human Resources, who are going to present the Personnel Commission Annual Report. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, board members. My name is Kristen Olson. I'm executive director of Classified Human Resources. I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce commission chair, Ms. Janine McManigle Ball. Tonight, she will walk you through some key highlights from the 2016, 2017 annual report. And then we'd like to open the floor to any questions the board members may have.
Good evening. I'm going to keep this short so you won't have to put your pajamas on before the end of our presentation. I'd like to start off by introducing my two outstanding co-commissioners. Mr. Entuck, please stand up. And Mr. Entuck is the classified staff appointee. So he's fantastic, so we appreciate him being here tonight. And Mr. Dick Gaylord is also here. He's your representative and he was just reappointed. And I really appreciate them being here tonight, in addition to Kristen. I'm going to go over some brief highlights and then again, we welcome questions from you at the end. The commission is comprised of three members and we are appointed. As I introduce my two co-commissioners, I'm the joint appointee. The merit system is what we are here to follow. And the merit system is the civil service equivalent of an educational agency so that we are primarily looking at merit and fairness. Some of the areas that we assist the college in administering are classification, compensation, recruitment, testing, selection, hiring, onboarding, professional development, training, employee relations and employee leaves. The Personnel Commission is supported by the executive director, Classified Human Resources, who administers the Classified Human Resources on a day-to-day basis. In turn, the office staff support the activities of the executive director. For this last year, some of the highlights for our year were the new employee orientation for classified staff. This is a training program that's scheduled several times each year and orients new employees to the college activities, the mission and reviews resources. We had the annual classified lunch and I think most of you were there this year. It's always a great event. It's such a nice, warm, welcoming place for everyone in our staff to be. And we really appreciate the support that we get from the college to have all of our members enjoy that afternoon. Our theme this year was international cuisine. We have Classified Professional Development Day for 2016, 17. The development day was in September. And some of our training topics covered were safety, understanding the college strategic plan and employee wellness. Our recruitment activities for this last year included approximately 70 recruitments for classified positions, averaging a workload of about 1.34 recruitments per week. In addition, we had 955 applicants who took written tests. We had 299 applicants who took, interviewed for those positions and we hired 78 classified employees. We also honored our employee service for this year and those ranged from five-year increments from five years where we had 10 employees, all the way up to 35 years of service where we had one employee at that level. It was a great year and I felt like we really accomplished a lot, one of which was hiring our new executive director. And that was a huge undertaking and I think we found the best person possible for that job. So I'm thrilled to add that to our list of accomplishments for this year. With that, do you have any questions for us?
Thank you. Members of the board at this time on the Personnel Commission Report.
Comments?
Comments?
Chair recognizes trustee Malauulu.
Thank you for being here, your entire commission. I have personally attended, I think, all of the events that you guys hosted and I really appreciate how well the classified staff works together to plan and organize, execute this event, all of these events. And it just really does a lot for the college community. It does a lot for the campus to see, especially, I was going to save that for my trustee report, but just to see Annie sitting up here and to know that literally the classified staff has a seat at the table, I just think that's wonderful and you guys do a really good job. So I just want to commend you. Nice and sweet, great report. I like it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd also like to acknowledge all the executive cabinet for the classified, for A F T. They're just a tremendous asset to us at all times and without them, we could not be doing this. So, but yeah, forensic audio.
Other members, comments?
Chair recognizes vice president Zia.
Thank you. I too wanted to thank you for a great report and for the brevity of the report. I don't want to sound like a broken record, but we certainly need to get our numbers up. I know you guys are working diligently on it and I just thank you for the work that you do. Thank you.
Other members? Thank you for the report. Thank you for everything you do. As I've stated earlier, many colleges don't have a Personnel Commission, which puts that entire burden onto the board of trustees. And if, if you think it's a lot, just a simple job, you have not done the job then. So we really appreciate the effort that the commission has done to help the college. So thank you very much. No other questions, comments at this time? We will move on. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're now to the consent calendar. So I'm going to ask if any items to be removed. I have a request by vice president Zia to remove item 4.10. Are there other items from the consent calendar? Members wishing to be polled for further discussion? Seeing none, I'll then ask, entertain a motion to approve the rest of the consent calendar. Motion by trustee Otto, second by trustee Malauulu. Student trustee, you will be voting on this item with the exception of item 4.17 and 4.16, which are personnel related. So with that, student trustee, your vote please on the remaining consent calendar. All right. Thank you. Madam Secretary, roll the board.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
And Sunny Zia.
Aye.
And student trustee Chavez.
Yeah.
I'll be the first one.
Yeah, I really would rather have the student trustee go after our vote. I think it's always putting a, I've always turned to you first.
It's confusing, because I have the advisory vote, which would mean I'd be the first one to give the advice, but at the end, I'm at the end, so it's kind of like.
Whatever you feel comfortable, but.
In the beginning.
You've always been at the beginning, so as long as you're comfortable with that, I'm fine with it. You've made more votes in your year here than any other student trustees in my entire career.
Thank you so much, President Kellogg.
You're welcome, I think. 4.10. This is a purchase order ratification before we have discussion on it, per vice president Zia. Could I entertain a motion to approve item 4.10? Both by trustee Malalulu, second by trustee Zia. Discussion on this item. Chair recognizes vice president Zia.
Yes, thank you, President Kellogg. I just wanted to commend staff on doing such a fantastic job. I've been asking for this for months, if not years, and it's finally come to fruition, so I want to thank superintendent president Dr. Ramali. It's because of your leadership that I'm seeing this report that has been long awaited, and I like the comprehensive format. I like the fact that it gives a broad overview of the contracts and purchasing that we have in totality, so I appreciate that. It also provides detail on what is remaining as far as expenditures. So, I know I provided some questions that I believe is outside or by the agenda and where the speaker cards are, so for the members of the public, my questions have been satisfactorily answered, and I just wanted to commend staff for the level of effort they put into this. The good news is that it was only one time. I understand it was 471 hours. That's equivalent to two months' worth of work with multiple people. So I just wanted you guys to know that the effort was definitely appreciated, and you deserve the commendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? Members of the board at this time? Chair recognizes trustee Baxter.
I just want to second what trustee Zia said. I appreciate all the time and energy that your staff, vice president, executive vice president Gable, put into this, so thank you very, very much.
You. Other members of the board? There's a motion and a second. Malalulu and Zia. No other comments, questions at this time? Madam Secretary.
Sir.
Student trustee, your advisory vote, please.
Aye.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, roll call.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malalulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
And Sunny Zia.
Aye.
Thank you.
President Kellogg?
Yes.
May I give a shout-out to EVP Gable and her, Margie Padron, and her entire team, who did just a fabulous job? So, thank you so much for your positive input. They were the ones who did this and put in such hard work. I'm so proud of them. Thank you.
Thank you. We're to Human Resources, item 5.1, the approval of district and LBCC Faculty Association tentative agreement. Student trustee, you will not be voting on this item. Could I entertain a motion and a second? Motion by trustee Zia, second by trustee Baxter. There's a motion and a second on the floor. Discussion, members of the board. Student, superintendent president, do we need any report leading into this?
No, sir.
None? Members of the board? Chair recognizes vice president Zia.
Thank you, President Kellogg. I just wanted to express how excited I am to vote on this item. It's with great pleasure, and I'm confident it's going to be a great vote and a great night tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes trustee Otto.
The, I'm looking forward to the vote on this matter as well, but I want to point out a few facts, because it's important to understand where we are. And that is, first, and we've heard this in a previous agenda item, we are in stabilization. That means that unless we achieve our growth, we can get a fixed amount of reimbursement from the state in perpetuity. We are looking at a diminishing high school pipeline. It wasn't that long ago that there were 90,000 students. For example, in the Long Beach Unified School District, there are now about 74,000 students, and that number seems to be going down every year. We have a board policy that we should have a $5.5 million reserve. With the passage of this agreement, absent changed circumstances, we will break that policy, and we will be at $4.3 million, which would also put us on the watch list for the chancellor's office, which is not a good thing in stabilization. Now, there are ways to get out of that. The ways to get out of it are, one, we have a fabulous enrollment management plan that is hugely successful, and we get a whole bunch more people, and we achieve our growth, and we get out of stabilization, and, you know, we do restoration, and, secondly, we find a whole bunch of money some other place and solve our problems that way. We're looking at pension contributions that are going to go up in the next six years. Right now, the employees, the classic employees, not the newly hired employees, but the longtime employees are paying 10.25% of their pension benefits, and they will, and that number will not go up. The employer is paying, in other words, the district is paying 14.5%, but by 2021, that will go to 19.1%, and I believe by 2023 or 2044, it goes up to 23% or something like that, which is a lot of money, and it's money that we're going to have to come up with someplace, and so I hope we don't find ourselves in a position where we're unable to do that. We heard a lot about a very exciting enrollment management plan that dovetails with our strategic plan, but it's going to cost money. We don't know exactly how much money that is, but we're working towards trying to understand that, and so, so these are all things to be aware of. In three years, so I'm told, and please correct me if I'm wrong, the salaries and benefits paid for by this community college district will be right at the 90% level. I always have considered that no-go territory. In fact, what happened for the City College of San Francisco was, when they got about to that number, they sort of imploded. And what happened was, as we all know, they lost their accreditation, and that was among the reasons. And so, I am not a doomsday person. I will support this agreement, but we better all be aware of what we do. We, in fact, I had it on my phone, I don't think I can find it, but one of our board goals is for this board to be fiscally responsible. And we take that, all of us take that very, very seriously. And so, there's a lot of very good communications that's going on in this college right now, and people are talking to one another and openly discussing the things that they care about, and I think that's a wonderful development. And one of the things we need to continue to talk about is fiscal responsibility and making sure that we continue to pursue that goal. That's all.
Thank you. Chair recognizes trustee Malalulu, followed by trustee Baxter.
I would like to thank my fellow board members for voting this agenda item up. I would like to congratulate the Faculty Association on a three-year contract, and I would also like to just comment on the fact that I believe that we are being fiscally responsible and prudent by investing in our greatest assets, which are our students, our faculty, our staff. Our manpower is essentially what makes us great. We can have the most beautiful, modern buildings in the world, and what good are they if they are empty? What good are they if they are manned with people without passion for education and students and community? But I believe that making the decision to award a fair contract is an investment in our longevity and in our place in society, especially here in our community, and just, I'm very proud to be able to vote on this contract. As a former member of the faculty, even though it was chai and part-time, I'm really happy that we are able to finally do something good and finally, finally get it right, and to right some, perhaps, injustices of the past. And I look forward to our investment being fruitful. I look forward to the faculty really stepping up and helping with enrollment management and really helping with retention of our students. And we, as a board, have taken that first step, and I know that we're going to be met halfway, and I look forward to the fruits of our collective labor. Thank you.
Chair recognizes trustee Baxter.
Yes, thank you, President Kellogg. I have campaigned on being a fiscally sound person, someone who is very, very aware of the importance of having reserves. At one time, we had very, very big reserves. I am confident that we will end the year with a better balance, ending balance, than we have right now. I know that the faculty understands this, that they're going to do everything that they can to make sure that we are successful by the end of the year. I also know, and I appreciate this of vice president Gable, that she is very fiscally conservative also, and so, and her area, as well as all the areas at college, will work very, very hard in making sure that wise decisions are made in purchasing and things like that. And so, even though I am very much in favor of being very, very ultra-conservative as far as money goes, I feel very confident that this vote will turn out to our benefit. And I agree with trustee Malalulu that this is one of the best things we can do to ensure the morale and the consistency of wonderful, hard-working people on classified hourly and full-time.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Chair recognizes trustee Zia.
Thank you, President Kellogg. I just wanted to recognize that consistently, our adopted budget and our actuals vary, and our actuals, we've always been over in our reserves, so I'd like to echo trustee Baxter's remarks that, you know, it is, it's been the trend. We're all conservative when it comes to our fiscal responsibilities. I also want to commend superintendent president Dr. Ramali. I know that she would never put us in a position of compromise, so thank you for your leadership, your team's leadership, and I believe in you, I have faith in you, and I know that this was done with balance and fairness and with a mindset that you're not going to put the district address, so thank you.
Other comments, questions at this time? Well, I'd like to thank the negotiating team, Jean and people that worked with the superintendent president. Negotiations are never easy, but I also believe that the board, when we finish negotiations, we, as a board, move forward. As a whole, the questions that have been raised are good questions. I know my colleagues have heard me repeatedly talk about protecting our retirees. They're usually a group that aren't, they aren't here, but many things we do with our budgets, we look forward to make sure that their retirements are secure as well. Health costs are going to increase. There's things we're going to have to look at, so it's really going to be interesting as we move forward, but it will not be the first, last, or only time that we deal with different economic swings. But I love the fact that, trustee Baxter, are you a conservative? Are you an ultra-conservative in fiscal issues? Because everyone has a tendency to do that, but the fact is, my simple way of looking at it, I always hope for the best but plan for the worst. And that is what's gotten us through in the past, because we've had some really horrible economic downturns, economic downturns that were caused outside the boundaries of this college. So, this is going to be a challenging times, one and if that time does come, and it will come, of how we work together, but that is the point. We all have to work together, and actually, that's what got us through the last bad economic time. They called it the Great Recession. I never saw anything great about it, but that seemed to be the term I'd like to refer to. But nonetheless, we all move forward on this one, and again, the negotiation team follows the direction of the board. And so, the board came forward, we raised issues, there are concerns, and hopefully that if those issues do come up, that we'll be able to address them appropriately. So, obviously, very supportive and thankful for all the work, and we move forward. There's no other questions, comments at this time? Again, student trustee, you're not voting on this issue. Madam Secretary, please call the roll of the board.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malalulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
And Sunny Zia.
Aye.
Thank you. You can applaud. Thank you very much. That concludes item 5.1. We're now on to 5.2. This is the approval of the superintendent president as the governing board designee for the purpose of requesting the designation of senior classified administrative positions. Superintendent president, do you need to add anything to that?
No, just this is, this is an exciting development that allows us to expand the number of applicants that come forward to me for a senior executive position, that allows us to get a larger pool, and a larger pool is always excellent in terms of considerations to get the best person for hire.
Thank you very much. Members of the board, questions at this time?
I think we need a motion.
Pardon me?
I don't believe we got a motion.
Can I entertain a motion?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Zia, second by trustee Malalulu. Questions, comments, members of the board at this time on this item? Hearing none. Student trustee, your advisory vote, please.
Aye.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, the roll.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malalulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
And Sunny Zia.
Aye.
Thank you. Item 5.3, this is the revised salary schedule. Classification is exempt from the merit system. Student trustee, you will not be voting on this item. Superintendent president?
Yes, I'd like to give this to Rose DelGaudio, vice president for Human Resources, to give us some more detail.
And while you're doing that, I'll ask for the motion.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Baxter, second by trustee Zia. There's a motion and a second on the floor. Vice president DelGaudio?
Yes, what we're asking the board tonight is to approve this new exempt salary schedule, because effective January 1st, 2018, the minimum wage will increase to $11 per hour, so we want to make sure that our salaries are in alignment with at least the minimum wage.
Thank you. Members of the board, questions at this time? Chair recognizes vice president Zia.
I just have a question on city of Long Beach, I believe. They passed a minimum wage requirement, I believe it's $15 an hour, if I'm not mistaken. Is there a reason why we're not, I don't know if it was inclusive to city employees, or I believe, if I understood correctly, it was citywide.
Now, that does not apply to us. We're in alignment with the state of California. State of California will actually go to $15 per hour in 2022.
Okay, so why is it that it doesn't apply to us again?
I think there are only certain entities that are involved in the $15 here in Long Beach, but it does not apply to Long Beach City College.
Okay, thank you.
Other members of the board at this time? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malalulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
Sunny Zia.
Aye.
Thank you. Item 5.4, employment contract. We'll start beginning with these. Corey Rogers, executive dean, enrollment services, which we just talked about. No student trustee vote on this one? I have to read the entire one, sorry. Per Brown Act, the employment contract provides for a term of employment from January 16, 2018, through June 30th, 2019. The contract provides for an annual compensation of $1,500, $1,051,789, along with a health and welfare benefits and life insurance. Could I entertain a motion to approve on item 5.10?
Second.
Second. By trustee Baxter, second by trustee Otto. Questions, comments on item 5.10?
Four.
Hearing?
5.4.
5.4.
Pardon me?
We're on item 5.4, not 10.
Oh, I'm sorry. Questions, comments on 5.4?
If Mr. Rogers is in the audience, could he please stand?
I don't believe he was able to make it. He is the evening dean as well over at Harvard College, so he is working.
Any other questions on item 5.4? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malalulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
Sunny Zia.
Aye.
Thank you. Item 5.5, employment contract. Eugene, Jean, Jean, come on, arrow. You want to go by Eugene or Jean? You want to go by Eugene or Jean? I didn't think so. Dean, career technology education. The employment contract provides for a term of employment from December 17, 2017 through December 31, 2018. The contract provides for an annual compensation of $135,687, along with health and welfare benefits and life insurance. Could I entertain a motion, a second on this item?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Baxter, second by trustee Malauulu. Questions, comments on item 5.5? Hearing none. No student trustee vote on this item. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on item 5.5.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
And Sunny Zia.
Aye.
Thank you. Jean, you want to stand up? You're official now. Thank you. Next one, 5.6, employment contract. Katie Sandara, interim associate dean, career technology education. The employment contract provides for a term of employment from January 1st, 2018 through March 31st, 2018. Contract provides for an annual compensation of $113,809, along with health and welfare benefits and life insurance. Could I entertain a motion, a second on 5.6?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Baxter, second by trustee Otto. Any questions, comments, members of the board on this item? There is no student trustee vote on this. Hearing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on item 5.6.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye. And would you like to ask her to stand after we're voting?
After, yes, I can.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
And Sunny Zia.
Aye.
The motion passes. Katie? Congratulations. Next item, 5.7, employment contract. Sonia De La Torra Inetex.
Mingus.
Did I do that close? Very good. Interim Associate Dean, Student Support Services. This employment contract provides for a term of employment from January 2nd, 2018 through June 30th, 2019. The contract provides for an annual compensation of $125,474, along with health and welfare benefits and life insurance. Entertain a motion, a second on item 5.7.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Zia, second by trustee Baxter. Questions, comments, members of the board at this time? Hearing none. There is no student trustee vote on this item. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on item 5.7.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
Sunny Zia.
Aye.
That motion passes. Oh, there you are, right in front of you, didn't move. Next item, 5.8, employment contract. Heather Van Valkenburg, Dean, Institutional Effectiveness. This is the employment contract provides for a term of employment from January 22nd, 2018 to June 30th, 2019. The contract provides for an annual compensation of $154,083, along with health and welfare benefits and life insurance. Could I entertain a motion, a second on item 5.8? Motion by trustee Baxter, second by trustee Otto. Questions, comments on item 5.8? Hearing none. No student vote on this item. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
Sunny Zia.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Stand, please.
Heather was not able to make it tonight. She is coming off accreditation.
Oh.
She what?
She's coming off of accreditation at her current employer.
Very good. Congratulations, Heather.
She lost her accreditation?
Item 5.9, I know Robin was here, Robin is here. 5.9, employment contract. Robin Darkangelo. This is for interim director, enrollment services. The employment contract provides for a term of employment from January 16, 2018 through June 30, 2018. The contract provides for an annual compensation of $151,789, along with health and welfare benefits and life insurance. Could I entertain a motion, a second on item 5.9?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Malauulu, second by trustee Zia. Questions, comments, members of the board at this time? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, there is no student vote on this item as well, 5.9. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
And Sunny Zia.
Aye.
5.9 passes. Robin, you were.
She just stepped out.
She stepped out? Okay, I know she's in the back room. Item 5.10, employment contract. Kena Hillman, interim associate dean, Academic Affairs. The employment contract provides for a term of employment from December 17, 2017 through December 31, 2018. The contract provides for an annual compensation of $125,474, along with health, welfare benefits, and life insurance. Could I entertain a motion, a second for item 5.10? Motion by trustee Zia, second by trustee Otto. On item 5.10, no student trustee vote on this item. No items in discussion. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on 5.10.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian, excuse me. Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
And Sunny Zia.
Aye.
Thank you, congratulations. I keep looking.
Is she here?
There you are. Congratulations. They're not here just because they don't think we're going to have controversy with this item, but it's nice to have you here.
Yeah, we appreciate the ones that are here.
5.11, the last one, I promise, 5.11 for tonight. 5.11, employment contract. Jennifer Roden, interim associate dean, library and student success. This employment contract provides for a term of employment from December 17, 2017 through December 31, 2018. The contract provides for an annual compensation of $1,100, I'm sorry about that, $125,474, along with health and welfare benefits and life insurance. Could I entertain a motion, a second on this item? Motion by trustee Zia, second by trustee Baxter. There are questions, comments, members of the board at this time? There is no student trustee vote on this. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on item 5.11.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
And Sunny Zia.
Aye.
5.11 passes. Maybe we should do these more often, we get applause, so. That concludes that item. We're now to Academic Affairs, 6.1, childcare fee increases effective February 1st, 2018. This is an action item, and student trustee will be allowed to vote. The recommended action, the board approved the proposed fee increase for the Child Care Center effective February 1st, 2018, as submitted. Could I entertain a motion, a second before discussion, please? Motion by trustee Malauulu, second by trustee Otto. Questions, comments, or is there a report needed on this, Superintendent President?
No, sir.
Pretty straightforward. Questions, comments, members of the board at this time on this item? Hearing none. Student trustee, your advisory vote, please.
Aye.
Aye on item 6.1. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
And Sunny Zia.
Aye.
Thank you. Item 6.1 carries. We're now to 7.1, correct, Madam Secretary?
That is correct.
We are at Administrative Services. This is a first reading of revised board policy and administrative regulations for grants. This is a revised administrative regulations, grants submitted for informational purposes only, does not require board action. First reading, questions, comments, members of the board at this time on this first reading? Hearing none. Student trustee, you are allowed to advisory vote on this. Was there no comments or questions?
No vote.
Others?
Comments.
Never mind. I'm trying to get you in on a vote. You could, if we were. That is a first reading. We will move on to the next one, where the student trustee can vote.
Vote anyway.
Want to do it anyway? 7.2, 2016-17, District Annual Audit, Measure E. Did we beat them? There you are. Okay. We asked you to come, and we were close to the time. So, this is item 7.2. This is the District Annual Audit, Measure E, 2008, and Measure LB, 2016, Performance Audit, and Measure E, 2008, and Measure LB, 2016, Financial Audit. This is, student trustee, you will be able to vote on this item. This is, pardon me. That the board receive and approve the following audit report as submitted. They are the District Financial Audit, the Bond Financial Audit, and the Bond Performance Audit. So, at this time, could I at least, for discussion, entertain a motion?
So moved.
And approve on that. Trustee, motion by trustee Zia, second by trustee Malauulu. At this time, Superintendent President?
Yes, sir. I'd like to hand it over to Executive Vice President Gable, who's going to introduce our team and our presentation tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Romali. So, I'm happy to report that we have very good audit reports that you'll be hearing. I won't steal Gemma's thunder, but we have Gemma Tachinsky here with Clifton Larson Allen, who's going to be giving us an update on all three of our audit reports. And we did have our board audit committee met and has already reviewed these audit reports in depth as well. Gemma?
All right, thank you. Jan Marie, and thank you, trustees, for having me here this evening. As was mentioned, the report has, we've met with the audit committee both at the beginning of the process and also at the end of the process, so I'll keep my presentation brief and then answer any questions that you might have. I'd like to call your attention to page 88. That's really where kind of the key summary of the results of the audit can be found. And the financial statements, we've issued an unmodified opinion. That is the best opinion that we can render, and that means that the financial statement reader can rely on the information here in the report. We also, as part of the audit process, we gained an understanding of internal control over financial statement reporting. We've issued no internal control findings and no non-compliance areas related to the financial statement. So, that's the first section of the financial statements. In terms of the report, the information in here is based on your 311. There were no audit adjustments to the 311 report, and there are reconciling items that are required as a result of converting from the modified accrual to full accrual. Those reconciling items can be found on page 72, if you're interested in seeing how they flow from your 311 to the final report. One thing I'll point out, there was a significant accounting principle that was implemented this year. This was GASB statements 74 and 75. This had to do with how the OPEB liabilities are reported, and so you'll see that in the report as well. If you want to read more about that section, you'll see that on page 32. But kind of the gist of that is that unfunded liabilities are now fully recorded in terms of the retiree health and welfare benefits. Terms of federal awards, part of our audit, this is a single audit, so we do have to look at federal programs. The federal programs that we tested this year are listed on page 88. Student financial aid was one of the programs, and then your trade adjustment assistance community college career training. As a result of that part of the audit, there were no internal control findings, and there were no areas of non-compliance. So, no findings there. I will also call your attention to page 86. This is a list of the state compliance areas that we were required to audit this year. And again, no internal control issues and no compliance findings. So, it's a recap of the financial statements. Before I move on to the bond audit, I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody has related to the financial audit.
Questions, comments, members of the board at this time on these items?
Very good, thank you. Okay, so a clean audit.
Moving forward.
Congratulations on a good audit.
There you go.
All right, so then we'll move to the financial audit related to Measure E and Measure LB, and those are both included in a separate report. Again, this audit was included in part of those beginning discussions about scope and responsibility, and then as part of the closeout of the audit process, meeting with the audit committee and management. Similar to the other report, we've issued an unmodified opinion. That is reported in the auditor's opinion letter, which is just after the table of contents. The report provides a new section, the Management Discussion and Analysis section this year. This is management's opportunity to talk about what's occurred during the year in relationship to the bond funds, and that is not an audited part of our report, but we do look at it for consistency with the rest of the document. The financial statements, again, are fairly stated. There's a balance sheet and income statement. You can see the activity for the year, as well as the ending balances for both Measure E and Measure LB at the end of the year. There was no significant changes in terms of accounting principles or footnotes, so I won't go over those in detail. But again, as part of the audit process, we are looking at internal control, and there were no findings associated with the financial audit either. Now, if there are any questions related to the financial bond audit, I'll address those, and if not, I can move forward with the performance audit.
Comments, questions at this time? Hearing none?
Okay. So, the performance audit, again, separate report, and this is a performance audit, again, of both Measure E and Measure LB. And on page one of the report is our official letter, the last paragraph, issues our opinion. For the testing that we performed, there were no areas of non-compliance noted. So, again, a clean report and a clean opinion. Page two lists some background and the objectives, and then page three continues with the objective scope and procedures. And so, the primary purpose of this audit is to look at compliance for expenditures and whether the money is spent appropriately in accordance with the voter-approved ballot measure. And so, our process was to ensure that we had full selection of sample, select a sample of expenditures, review them for compliance with the bond measure, and then comment on whether there were any areas of non-compliance. We looked at, if you look on page three, you can see the percentage of, and the dollar value of expenditures that were tested. We tested 13.6 million out of Measure E and another 2 million out of Measure LB, a total between the two of over 56% of total expenditures. And then, in addition to that, there are some salaries charged to Measure E, and we looked at salaries as well for compliance to ensure individuals are associated with the bond programs and they're working in relationship to that, not in other administrative, you know, tasks. There is some additional information in the back of the report, just a little data in terms of the bond measures, how much has been spent to date in each of the projects, and so that's there for your information. But again, clean opinion, no areas of non-compliance were noted as a result of our audit. Any questions?
Question, comments, members of the board at this time, just because the president of the board serves on the subcommittee. It was with trustee Otto. It was with Trustee Otto. We took the time, looked at the items, but as was noted, and I heard Trustee Malalulu say, "Thank you for a clean report." It was, it really is important that people, especially in the public, realize that we do independent audits to cross-check what we do. It is good practice, I believe it's also the law, but nonetheless, it is, it's healthy because it hasn't always been the case to report back. So we have been this, consistently been doing this with a clean report. There are no issues that we need to address, and for that, these are the type of independent audit reports we like to have coming before the board. So I just want my colleagues to know that as the Chair of the Ad Hoc Committee or the Subcommittee, that we did go through this with you two weeks ago, with Superintendent President and also with Vice President Gable. Questions, comments, anyone at this time? Chair recognizes Vice President Zia.
Thank you. Did you have something?
I just have one question, but go ahead.
Well, I'll wait until after Trustee Otto.
Chair recognizes Trustee Otto, followed by Vice President Zia.
This has nothing to do with the audit itself, but are any parts of the audit that's done confidential in any way? Are they all public documents?
These are all public documents, so whatever we're issuing is a public document.
Okay. Vice President Zia?
I'm sorry. President Kellah, can I clarify? If I'm interpreting your question correctly, Trustee Otto, the audit reports are public documents, but the audit work papers are not public documents.
Okay, fine, thanks.
Thank you for that clarification.
Vice President Zia?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted, I had just had one comment. As someone who was on the Audit Committee previously and had a chance to really dive into the details of your work, I mean, not to the point of micromanaging, of course, but just having the ability to question some of the process and the procedures we follow, I just wanted to thank you for the work you do, and also our staff and the rigor that is applied. I know our staff works very hard, and you guys as a co-sourcing portion of our staff, and I'm very confident in the work that has been performed here, and I'm glad that we have no findings. Thank you.
Thank you. And if I can also just thank staff, Anne Marie, John, Cindy, their department, but also Financial Aid, A&amp;R, there are a lot of departments that we kind of interrupt their day-to-day work, and everybody's very responsive, and so we really appreciate, you know, the hard work that they put in in terms of providing us the information we need in order to, you know, issue a report. So it's appreciated. Thank you.
Other comments, questions, members of the board? Seeing none. There is a motion to second on item 7.2. Student trustee, advisor vote, please.
Aye.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, roll the board.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kalong.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
I vote with the student trustee.
Sunny Zia.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 7.3, this is general obligation refunding bond sale. This is an informational item only. Superintendent President?
Yes, I would like to have EVP Gable talk to this item.
Thank you, President Romali. So as the board knows, on October 24th, the board approved the resolution for us to do a refunding of some of our existing bonds. We had a very successful sale of those bonds on November 16th, and so what we're bringing forward tonight is a short analysis of the refinancing. So I think, you know, I'm very excited to say that with the refinancing, we refunded $83,490,000 for a total taxpayer savings of over $38 million, or about 24.89 percent. I'm sorry, I forgot my glasses, and so the page is blurry. That's okay. I'll just put it farther away. Anyway, so we, you know, we continually look at all of the outstanding debt that we have for opportunities to where we can refinance the debt. And what we mean by refinancing is, just like with your home mortgage, when you enter into a home mortgage loan, you enter into it at a set percentage, and as the percentage rates are dropping, you have an opportunity to refinance it in order to save money on the interest costs. And that's exactly what we do with our general obligation bonds. So in this case, we save present value savings of over 21.3 percent, and like I said, it was almost a 25 percent savings by doing the refinancing. The other caveat that I would say is I think we're very fortunate, we had great timing of getting into the market, because as we know, this is one of the things that is proposed to be discontinued with the new tax law, so the opportunity for us to refinance in the future could be very slim.
I just have a question.
Members of the board, questions, comments at this time on this informational item?
I have a question.
Recognizes trustee Otto, followed by Vice President Zia.
I don't have the report in front of me. How much did it cost us to refinance the bonds?
The total cost, the cost of issuance was over about $260,000 for the cost of issuance of that, but that's kind of built in, and so the savings is already reflected with the cost in there.
Vice President Zia?
Yes, thank you. First of all, I want to thank for putting this together. I believe it was a question I had as far as annual savings for taxpayers, and I appreciate the thoroughness and the detailed nature of it. My question was precisely on that, because my understanding was that the private activity bonds will be affected, but it is my understanding, the reason I know this is because we just went through this with our lobbyists at the Harvard Department of the City, that apparently it has made it back into the final revision, or is in the process of making it back in the final revision of the Senate and the House bill. So we may actually have that option again. So it's something to look out for. That's what my understanding was during the reconciliation process, but you may have more up-to-date information as of today. That's what, as of Monday, was discussed. I don't know if you have further information, but it would be great if we can continue to have the refinancing ability in the future, and it is my understanding that it made it back into the bill.
Other questions, comments? I'm sorry, did you have any questions? Other questions, comments, members of the board at this time? That was an informational item only, no vote required. We'll move on to reports. 8.1, Academic Senate President. Good evening.
Thank you, President Kellah. So I have a brief report. I just want to let the board know that Long Beach City College had two very, very successful events, statewide events. In November, we hosted at the Pacific Coast Campus the South Regional Curriculum Meeting, where over 100 faculty, staff, and administrators from the Southern California Community College came over and heard about updates to curriculum that are coming from the state. And on December 8th, we hosted the Educational Future Grants Application Workshop here at this campus. Also, a very large group of faculty administrators and from different colleges came over for that. I also want to let the board know that the Senate approved at our last meeting for the college to submit a interest in being part of the Online Education Initiative Consortium Cohort. So that is going to be, that letter was submitted, and the Senate is going to be working with Husam in hopefully, not hopefully, in working with more and improving our online offering to increase our FTEs. And I want to congratulate Professor from English, Nicole Glick, for being the faculty nominee for the 2018 John and Susan Roush Excellence Award. So she and several other members of the college are going to be going to a nice conference and getting that wonderful award, so I want to congratulate. And lastly, I just want to let you know that in our January meetings, we will be having a lot of items from curriculum come forward to the board for approval. So thank you and happy holidays.
Thank you. And for the first time, Classified Senate President Report, please.
Hello. Don't really have a report, just wanted to say, I have to at least say something in the mic for the first time, so just wanted to say how exciting it is for Classified Senate to be established and be part of this institution, and we are all very excited and hope that we work very well and support the college. So thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent President?
Yes, sir. I think, want to thank everyone for what I think was a very successful board meeting and a capstone, putting the, a wonderful cap on the end of the school year as we get ready for the holidays and are experiencing some holidays, the eighth night of Hanukkah tonight and Christmas coming up. We had a great enrollment management plan and purchasing analytics presentation and guided pathways presentation. I want to let you know we are in the very early talks with Long Beach Unified School District at opening a middle college on our Pacific Coast campus, which will try to reach into the minority populations that surround the local area. And also, we are in discussions with them as to what sort of stackable credentials we will offer there, how those might transfer to our local CSUs and UCs, and that's a very exciting conversation that will help enrollment and completion and job opportunities. We're also going to join the Online Education Initiative Enrollment Work Group, another acronym, that's going to help, as President Achoa talked about, help shape how we, how the educate, Online Education Initiative goes, so we're excited to be a part of that. I also want to give a big shout out to all of our new employees. Tonight, we're so excited to have you on board and welcome you in the new year, and thank again Executive Vice President Gable and her entire team for the tremendous, tremendous work on the purchasing analytics report. Two more things, we had two very successful cookie exchanges for the holidays. I want to thank Karen Harada and Rose Delgado, and all of the unions and senators who contributed time and money to this event. For those of you that were able to attend, we thank you for coming, and we know this is definitely going to be an annual tradition. I also want to congratulate Annie Engel, Classified Senate President, on your first night at the dais, where we welcome you, all folks, that, all of that input is so critical to us, and we are putting our money where our mouth is over the winter break. We are building out some office space on the T Building Suite, where the Academic Senate President and the Classified Senate President will have shared office space in the President's Office Suite. So you will be able to conduct your business in some office space, so we congratulate you for that. And I just want to wish everyone a happy holidays and give you my sincere thanks for the tremendous hard work that everyone has done this semester, and wish you the best with your families. Thank you.
Thank you, President Romali. Student trustee?
Good evening, everyone. So semester has gone and it's came and gone. Looking back at the semester, I've had time to reflect from the beginning, where I was enrolled in 19 units, which was six classes, and at the end, ending with 19 units, six classes. And I believe that I earned, I believe I earned a GPA of 3.8 with four As and one B, and I look forward to being here at Long Beach City College for my last semester. As for the upcoming semester, I did not enroll as many units. I enrolled in 13 units, so therefore I'm still full-time. However, I do look forward to being much more involved within campus events and serving on a variety of campus and district committees. Now, as it comes to the halfway point as my term here at Long Beach City College, I realize just how much Long Beach City College has meant to me within this year of 2017. I remember my first meeting back in June 27, 2017, and now it's December, and next thing you'll know, it'll be the May meeting, and that'll be my final meeting. So it's, it's a long road. As I mentioned in our last meeting, the ASV attended the Student Center for California Community College Convention that occurred throughout the weekend of November 17 through the 19, and throughout this convention, we were able to pass legislation and resolutions. Some of the resolutions include that the SSCC urged the California Legislature, the Board of Governors for California Community Colleges, and the governing bodies of community college districts to pass legislation supporting Dreamers, that the SSCC strongly advocated and implement events in regards to celebrating Indigenous Peoples' Day across communities college statewide, and that the SSCC urged the Chancellor's Office to better regulate the veteran services on each campus. These were just some of the resolutions that we passed at the Student Center for California Community Colleges Convention, and we'll be having another convention this upcoming May of 2018 in the city of Ontario. With that said, that concludes my student trustee report, and I wish everyone happy holidays.
Thank you very much. Board of Trustees, as is my custom, we rotate. We'll begin with trustee Baxter, followed by Otto, Malalulu, Zia, then myself. Trustee Baxter?
Okay, thank you, President Kellah. Just want to give a report on what I've been doing since the last board meeting. I attended the nursing completion ceremony along with trustee Malauulu and trustee Otto. It's always heartrending to see the completion ceremony and how excited our future nurses and vocational nurses are at achieving this goal, and I want to congratulate Dean Paul Creason and his leadership of this very vital department, that's department period, okay. I also attended the cookie exchange at both campuses, and I want to thank President Romali for designating the homeless student population in her donations. People were to bring something for the homeless students, and both pantries at the Liberal Arts Campus and Pacific Coast Campus were filled, and that was great to see and wonderful, and thank you very much for that. Congratulations to Roush Excellence Awardees, Nicole Glick, Michelle Grimes-Hillman, she's gone, okay, Jennifer Holmgren and Marjorie Pedrone for their award, and it's a very prestigious award and very well-deserving. I want to say thank you to Councilman Al Austin and also to trustee Sunny Zia. Al Austin had a drive at his office to help Long Beach City College homeless students, so thank you very much for that. And then lastly, I attended the LEAD Academy graduation last Friday night at Rose Delgado's home. Thank you, Rose, for opening your home. And again, it was a great atmosphere to see the enthusiasm of the LEAD Academy graduates, and it's such a wonderful program, and I'm so pleased that the college and the board in particular has supported this, and I look forward to many more LEAD graduations. And happy holidays to everyone and hope you have a wonderful new year, and we'll be back in January.
Trustee Otto?
Very quickly, first, happy holidays to everyone. I think it's been a great meeting. We've done, looking back on the last seven months, it's been a whirlwind and fun, and we've accomplished a lot. I will confess that I went to both cookie exchanges. And could, and at the first one, I learned a lesson because I got a box of cookies and I put it next to me in the car as I drove back to the office, and when I got back to the office, there weren't any cookies in it, and I thought that there must be a mouse in my car or something, but I couldn't find it. And I participated in a conference at Cal State Long Beach on labor relations and negotiations, mediation, on a panel with, where I presented with a bunch of people, but most significantly, Jonathan Lightman of the FAC, the Faculty Association, and a good friend, and I think that's about it, so.
Thank you. Trustee Malalulu?
But did you karaoke at the cookie exchange party?
At the request of Superintendent President Romali, I did not.
So it's been a really busy month. It's always a busy month, but the holidays just kind of make it even busier with so much celebration going on. Talk about those, you know, holiday pounds. Every event involves food. We need to plan events that don't involve food, just water. Just have holiday parties with nothing but water. So again.
Is there a drought?
Yeah. Again, welcome, Annie. It's really nice to have you here. I'd like to congratulate students, faculty, and staff on another great semester. I hope you all did really well on your finals. Grades are in, everybody's happy. Now you can take a deep breath, relax, and get ready to do it again in a couple of weeks. Lots of events, lots of college and community events, and I'm going to come back, I'm going to save the two best ones for last, really quickly. I was also at the Labor Negotiations Conference at Cal State Long Beach with trustee Otto, and it was really nice to see other members of our campus life there. AFT was there, LBCC FA was there, CHI was there. So it was great that we were all there. Rose was there, Rose was on a panel, so it was really neat to see everybody there for the same conference. I was not expecting to see that. I attended the both student life awards on both campuses. I'd like to congratulate so many clubs and club sponsors for all the work that they do, and I was really excited that the Spotlight Theater Club received an award for the work that they've done in the community, especially the We Are Long Beach Theater Project. I was like yelling really loud for that. This past weekend, I attended the Care Toy Drive. I had my kids with me. They had a great time, and as we were walking out to the car, I explained to them why we were there, that these were LBCC students who were single parents, and you know, my own kids didn't even, it didn't even occur to them that they were there as a benefit to others. They thought they were just there to have fun and play, which is really neat. I also attended the Nurse Penning Ceremony with trustee Baxter and trustee Otto, and one thing I want to mention about that event, every graduation is special, every culmination is special, but this one always tugs at my heart because the students who speak are talking about the hardships that they face. And at one point, I looked over and I saw, it was like paparazzi, it was all these parents and significant others and children. I took a picture of it with their cell phones aimed at the graduates as the graduates were receiving their pins, and I looked over and it was like, wow, you know, this event is as much for them as it is for the nursing students. I attended the Journalism Award. I was able to bestow the fourth trustee Malauulu Scholarship to a deserving journalism student, who happened to also be a single mom, and her youngest child was there. The LEAD Academy Dinner at Rose's home, thank you for hosting, it was a beautiful home. A couple of Board of Governors events, again, holiday dinners and parties. I went to the Metal Fabrication Year-End Barbecue, which was really neat. It was kind of hands-on, and they had a lot of examples of the work that they've done. Commissioner Gaylord's Installation Ceremony, and this past Sunday, I went to the O. Henry Closing Theater Production with the intention of leaving early because I had another event at church to get to, and you know, I lost track of time. It was 90 minutes, no intermission, and the theater department did such a great job. I love O. Henry, I love teaching his stories, so to see the O. Henry Christmas on our stage was really neat, and I was late to my church event because I lost track of time. Now, I'm going to close with two very special events. Number one, in my district, we hosted a group of Cabrillo High School students, male and female, even though the majority of them were gems, girls, engineering, math, and science, and it was on the PCC campus last Friday. We hosted them from 8:00 to 12:00 noon, had a little breakfast, and they actually got to weld. It was a welding event, and they actually got to, hands-on, put on the safety PPE, personal protection equipment, protective equipment, and they got to weld, which is really neat. And the last thing, we have a Viking float. So we got through parade season, and I am so grateful, and I want to apologize for being such a pest since last year, asking for a float, and we have a presence in the community. I received just tremendous overwhelming feedback. To have so many people in Long Beach be alumni and to see us coming down with an actual Viking float, you should have seen people's faces. Viking float, you should have seen people's faces at the Belmont Shore Parade. I watched, and they were like, oh, you know, they're so used to seeing us in a truck. We have a float. So I need to thank especially, most especially, Sean Revelle, because he's the one that I think I nag the most. I also need to thank John Pope because I had gone to him first, and I was saying, John, we got to have something. Come on, this is, you know, marketing. His team, his staff, Stacy Toda, they were both there at each of the events, Daisy Lane in my district. And I'd also like to thank Anne Marie Gable for freeing up the money to make it possible. I don't even want to know where the money came from. It's one of those things where I'm going to look the other way on that one. But I'd like to thank the facility staff. So, and if I leave anybody out, I apologize. You guys did a great job, and I'm so grateful, personally grateful. There's Tim Wooton, Erin Anderson, Rick Evans, John Howard. Sean Revelle's LEED Academy cohort from last year actually took leadership of the design and the construction. He shared a link of stories, pictures, how they constructed it, where they bought it from. Also, Ryan Thomas and Doris May. Let me see, we've got Dana Freeze, I believe, Ahmad Faltes, Eric Boran, Jill Birdwell, Karen Rothstein. I think I already mentioned Stacy. And if I'm leaving somebody out, I apologize. I just want to make sure that I say thank you for the awesome Viking float. Ole was there, the Viking, it was a great time. Thank you, everybody. Happy holidays. See you at PCC next month.
Vivian, I'll just add Tom Nice, who's our carpenter.
Oh, yes, the carpenter, yes. Tom actually did a great job with the shields on the side of the float. And if you haven't seen the float, what happened? The dragon head. If you haven't seen the float, it's a float. It's shaped like an old Viking, it's got shields, and they even put tinsel on the bottom, blue tinsel, to make it look like it was floating on the ocean. It was just great. I'm so happy. Thank you, everybody. Good job. Great teamwork. Thank you. Now, I'll leave you guys alone.
Vice President Zia, please.
Thank you, President Kelleb. I believe I have some pictures that's going to be lighting up soon, so for my report, while that is being displayed. So this is for the benefit of the public. I had the great pleasure of going to the welding programs barbecue. And there's another picture, but the gentleman on the left-hand side, the solo picture, that's Jonathan McKibben, and that's his fabulous work of what he's produced with welding. It's quite exquisite and fine detailing, so it made me so proud. I believe he won some award. And then also, to the right is, with him is Jonathan Ramos. And of course, our very own faculty, Tim Schumacher, who is our pride and joy. And then also, I want to give a big thank you to him and Damon Skinner for hosting this, for doing such a great job. It was interactive, they displayed their machines. It just was a tangible way of seeing how, you know, all these equipment, all these purchases that we get to see on paper is making a difference in the lives of our students and the state-of-the-art machinery that we were able to do and approve as a board. And they made me a little box, a little cube, which was fabulous. So I really want to thank them and give them kudos. And perhaps we can have their work displayed in our internet and our publications and give it a little bit more highlight and emphasis so folks in the community who want to take advantage of this program and other CTE programs, they can absolutely learn about it and find out about it. So that was on December seventh. Prior to that date, look at how awesome our students are and how happy they are. I don't know who the other student is. I think he was just tagging along. I don't know if he's a student, but I didn't quite get his name. But on December fifth, I had the great pleasure of being invited to the Board of Supervisors. Supervisor Janice Hahn and I have been working on just really making funds available for food and access to food for our students that are experiencing hunger and food insecurity. They were going to pass that for countywide. And thankfully, supervisor Hahn was able to propose an amendment that will be earmarked for college students. In particular, she mentioned during her campaign trail that her and I had a discussion about this and that it was something that was not in the forefront and they weren't aware of it. So this will give our students access to CalFresh, which is a program that'll, it'll be, it's statewide and it's countywide, but within ninety days from December fourth, they're going to come back with a report, and we'll be finding out just the mechanics and the rollout of it. But that was fantastic news. As you know, in May, they also passed an item that will provide housing. And again, she was able to, by working with us and having that awareness, have a set aside for access to housing for our students and community college students. I did report to her, and thank you staff for providing the latest statistics that one out of six of our students have been reported as homeless. And it is absolutely a travesty and cataclysmic statistics that we need to work on, and we're working on. So that's good news from a policy standpoint, and I want to thank the supervisor and Board of Supervisors for approving that item. Also, as trustee Baxter mentioned, on December, tomorrow actually, council member Austin will be dropping off the food and toy drive items that they've had for our homeless students. So we're very grateful that they thought of us. I've talked to him many times, and I think I've pretty much, I'm beginning to sound like a broken record, but luckily, it's making a difference, the little that it is. But that's happening tomorrow. And on Thursday, December fourteenth, I just want to mention this and why this is relevant to our students. Councilman Supernaugh and I had the pleasure, and our Personnel Commissioner, Udrav Antak, was also there in having a vigil for community hospital and the nursing staff there, that they're closing it down. The reason why this is important and is relevant to our students is that they're going to go ahead with the cutoffs and the layoffs with students, or, excuse me, graduates or nurses that have associate degrees and not bachelor's degrees. And a lot of them are graduates of our institution. They're great nurses, some of them with thirty-plus experiences, years of experience, who live and work in Long Beach. And it was good to be there to support them. Hopefully, they won't be affected, but I just wanted to highlight that and heighten your awareness about the impact that it's going to have on our community and our students that have graduated from here, who have been contributing members of our society and have been working at community hospital. With that, I have no further remarks. Thank you, and happy holidays to everyone.
Thank you. For the, to address the time, it is the eighth day of Hanukkah. It's also the six days before Christmas, so whichever way, we are definitely in the holiday season. In the interest of time, I would though like to ask if my colleagues, if we could adjourn the meeting in memory of, Miles Nevin's father passed away since our last meeting, sadly. And so I just asked that when we adjourned the meeting, we adjourn in his father's memory, ironically, for, and Miles is not here, but the fact is that he had, from that to, on a more positive note, he got engaged this last couple of weeks. So cycle of life. But if we could at least adjourn in his father's memory, I'd appreciate it. That, and wishing everyone a very wonderful holiday. Yeah, I haven't got there yet. It's still part of my trustee comments. So as a trustee, I'd like to wish everyone the best of holidays and a prosperous new year, and we'll see everyone in the next year. With that, that concludes our Board of Trustees. We do have trustee committees. There's nothing to report out on that item. The next item is future reports, and the future reports on nine point one as listed, unless anyone has any other suggestions, but those are what we have as well. The next item, ten point one, ten point two, and ten point three, those are all presentations by our bargaining units. I do not see any of them here, so we'll move forward from that. Public comments on non-agenda items. Madam Secretary, I believe we have none, very good. And then there's no need for a second closed session. So with that, I will ask everyone if we could adjourn in the memory of Miles Nevin's father, wishing everyone the very best. And we adjourn this meeting to our January twenty-third meeting at the Pacific Coast Campus. Without objection, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much and good night. Just for purposes of announcement, we will be having a special meeting on a specific item on January ninth.
At five P M.
At five P M. here at the LAC campus. That's January ninth, a special meeting will be posted per Brown Act. Thank you all very much. Good night.